Noting the time and the presence of a quorum, I'd like to begin our January 23rd, 2023 Select Board meeting. We'll start as we usually do with the President's Concerns. Anyone has anything that's not on the agenda they'd like to speak about, please come forward.
Tara Fredericks from Mass. Ave. in West Acton. And I have a question first and then my concern. The question would be, are you going to let people talk during the CR presentation, the Morrison Farm presentation?
We will have time for people to speak, yes.
So people will be able to speak then, so there's no point in my saying it now, okay. And then I just want to thank Tara Lucci and Doc Curtis for their service with the Citizens Library Trustees, on the Citizens Library Trustees. I think that they did a splendid job. I feel like it's a real shame that they resigned. I feel like I understand why they resigned, and I hope that the Select Board and others will be more respectful and will respect what they wanted, effectively, out of respect for their work. I feel like what's happening, or what has been happening, has been an all-out assault on the Citizens Library Trustees, and I hope that people calm down and start working more cooperatively, as was promised at the beginning. I asked whether people were envisioning a hostile takeover, and no, we were promised collaboration, and that's what I think that we should work with. We can do better than what I saw two weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Is this time to express concerns about the battery storage facility? Can we talk about the garage storage facility now?
There'll be a public hearing on that shortly, starting at...
Yes, there will be a hearing on that.
So we'll talk later about that?
Accept comments at that point. Yes, thank you.
Good evening. Martin Benson, 21 Deacon Hunt Drive. Tonight, I will address the Select Board's December 19, 2023 vote to remove Dave Lunger from the Acton 250 Committee. I'm not defending the content of any of his social media posts. However, the vote to remove Mr. Lunger was marred by an improper process and serious violations of the First Amendment. First, the process used to remove Mr. Lunger was flawed, improper, and not in accordance with an established policy. The Select Board improperly approached the discussion and vote regarding Mr. Lunger's appointment as a second confirmation hearing. At the start, town council said, quote, "If going forward, now you all decided to seat the appointed member," end quote. The problem is Mr. Lunger was already appointed to this committee, but this board approached the issue as if he hadn't. The Select Board didn't have the right to remove Mr. Lunger for comments he made prior to his appointment. The Select Board already had their opportunity to examine this issue when they voted to appoint him on November 7th, 2022. Secondly, two reasons which the Select Board cited as cause for Mr. Lunger's removal from the 250 Committee on December 19th, 2022, are potentially illegal infringements of his constitutionally protected right to freedom of speech. In the first example, before the vote to remove Mr. Lunger, town council requested that Ms. Arsenault amend her motion to include the reason that Mr. Lunger was being removed. The reason cited was because his tweets were considered, quote, "hate speech." This is problematic because there's no hate speech exception to the First Amendment. The no hate speech exception to the First Amendment was reaffirmed unanimously by the 2017 Supreme Court case, Matal v. Tam. In their decision, the Supreme Court wrote, quote, "Speech that demeans on the basis of race, ethnicity, gender, religion, age, disability, or any other similar ground is hateful. But the proudest boast of our free speech jurisprudence is that we protect the freedom to express, quote, 'the thought that we hate,'" end quote. Thus citing hate speech wouldn't qualify as cause. In the second example, to prove cause for his removal, the town had to show that Mr. Lunger violated a policy. No policies existed regarding guidelines for those serving on town committees. In lieu of an actual policy, the Select Board cited their "respect for all" statement to prove cause and justify his removal. This statement, which was issued in July 2021, reads, quote, "The Select Board values all Acton's residents. Any type of hurtful speech or action targeting anyone for who they are is unacceptable here, including racism, antisemitism, ethnic slurs, homo or transphobia, ableism, et cetera. Respect for everyone is expected in all interactions in our community," end quote. However, this statement is in direct violation of the First Amendment. In his concurring opinion to Matal v. Tam, Justice Anthony Kennedy wrote, quote, "A law that can be directed against speech found offensive to some portion of the public can be turned against minority and dissenting views to the detriment of all. The First Amendment does not entrust that power to the government's benevolence. Instead, our reliance must be on the substantial safeguards of a free and open discussion in a democratic society," end quote. Thus, the town is forbidden by the First Amendment to establish rules which seek to limit the free speech rights of anyone. The Select Board cannot claim that Mr. Lunger, prior to his appointment to the 250 Committee, violated a Select Board policy which illegally restricted the First Amendment rights of the citizens of Acton without their consent as reason for cause for his removal. For the reasons mentioned above, the Select Board vote to remove Mr. Lunger from the Committee was likely illegal. If this case were to go to court, the town of Acton would most likely lose due to the violations of Mr. Lunger's First Amendment rights. The rights enshrined in the First Amendment are some of the most sacred rights we have as Americans, so sacred that in 1977, David Goldbergger, a Jewish attorney employed by the Illinois chapter of the ACLU, agreed to represent a group of neo-Nazis seeking to hold assembly in the town of Skokie. This was due to its sizable Jewish population. Nonetheless, the Jewish lawyer took the neo-Nazi's case all the way to the Supreme Court, which eventually issued a ruling in their favor. Greenberger's story was featured in a recent Newsweek article from January 4th, 2023. In this article, he says, quote, "I feverly believe that free speech is the core of democracy, and that as a general rule, the curative for bad speech is more speech. That is at the very foundation of the First Amendment. The alternative is to have the government decide who can talk and what they can say." This is exactly what is happening here in Acton. Our government is telling us who can talk and what they can say. This board should vote to vacate their decision to remove Mr. Lunger from the 250 Anniversary Committee, as it was without process and sets a dangerous precedent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, there's one person online.
Okay. Matt, would you let the one person who's online speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Lynn Parker, you should be able to speak.
I wasn't aware that I had my hand up.
Okay, you don't wish to speak at this time?
I'm not quite sure. I did not have my hand up. I'm sorry for that.
Okay. If you are planning on speaking about the street lighting issue in West Acton, we will be taking that up as a separate agenda item later on in the evening.
Nancy Lenacek. I live at Marine Park Land Lane in Acton. Wow. Okay. I am very concerned, and I am upset. This regards the West Acton Citizens Library. I've been a patron for a long, long time. I was a trustee for at least 15 years, and it's really a fabric of life in that neighborhood. It's quite special. And I hate to see it treated this way. And the three trustees are now down to one because the two trustees who left were so intimidated by the trustees from Memorial Library. And I wouldn't have believed that, but I saw it at that last meeting, and I just found it appalling. And I feel like they, whoever they may be, are trying to take away the autonomy of the trustees of that library, and I think that's a bad mistake. Thank you.
Thank you. Here's a public comment. All right. We do have a continuance of... We're going to take things out of order slightly, looking at the time. We do have a stated time for a site plan special permit discussion at 100 Discovery Way. I don't have the legal notice to open that. David, can you...
Might be able to find that in just a second, Mr. Chair.
Just a programming note while we're looking for this. Item 5, discussed proposed economic development resolution for town meeting, that is actually an item that will be continued to the next meeting, February 6, I believe. So if you're waiting here for that, just wanted to make sure you knew that.
Thank you.
Can I go ahead and read that notice?
Yes, please.
The Acton Select Board will hold a public hearing on January 23rd, 2023, at 7:10 p.m., continued from December 19th, 2022, in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room 204 at Town Hall 472 Main Street, Acton, virtually, actonmad.gov/meeting/pos. On the application of BWC Colesbrook LLC for a site plan special permit under zoning bylaw section 10.4 at 100 Discovery Way for an energy storage facility, application materials and how to participate remotely are available online and at Acton Town Hall. Online is http://doc actedonmad.gov dsweb-view/collection-15376.
Thank you. David, you've been sort of shepherding this through. Why don't you lead off?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I assume we're going to get an updated presentation from the applicant tonight. I know that the proposed location of the facility has been moved and its square footage has been reduced. I'll let the applicant, if that's okay, speak to those things, and then I can, I'll have a few comments afterward, if that's okay.
Thank you. The applicant's come forward, please.
Good evening, Board members. Our engineer, Drew Vardakis, is online. If he's, and he can share the updated site plan on the screen. Andrew Vardakis from WSP. WSP Engineering. Oh, I'm sorry, there's been just a change of personnel. Kanina Kong. While the plans are getting pulled up, thank you for your time tonight. We wanted to come give an update as to what's progressed since the last meeting in front of the Select Board, what has changed about the plan. Our last meeting with the Board of Health, the remaining items were submitted to them, and then just addressing and identifying any remaining questions or concerns that the Select Board may have. As was mentioned, our site plan has been updated with a new location for the system and a more condensed design. The relocation system was done in an effort to increase setback to the southern property boundary. Thank you for sharing. And Kanina, if you could just go to the proposed conditions sheet. Thank you. So as you can see, the outline along the southwest edge of the parking lot is the new proposed location for the system. The previous setback from the southern property boundary was approximately 160 to 70 feet. That has been increased to 269 feet. So we've increased the setback from the limit of work to the southern property boundary by approximately 100 feet. The overall limit of work and footprint of the project has also shrunk. The current proposed square footage is approximately 12,000 square feet total for the entire limit of work. Previously, we were, the limit of work was proposed closer to two acres of total limit of work. So there's been a significant reduction in the overall footprint of the project. Due to the location along the existing hill, along the southern edge of the parking lot, most of that space is not vegetated or, there's no trees. So most of the space that's being taken up by the project now won't require clearing. There will be some grading required. What we'd be proposing is a cut into that slope with a retaining wall to put the system at grade with the existing parking lot. There would be no need for a new access road, so access to the project would just occur off of the existing parking lot. There would be parking spaces in front of the system as well for maintenance or other needs. And then again, the retaining wall would just be at grade with the surrounding slope behind the project. There'd be an additional setback from that retaining wall of approximately 10 feet, just to allow for just a slight setback for existing vegetation and constructability of the wall. Along the edge of the system adjacent to the parking lot, there would be bollards for protection against vehicular impacts. Those are, would be designed per NFPA 855 standards. So bollards at every four feet along the edge of the system facing the parking lot, and they would be, you know, concrete-filled bollards. Additionally, there was a concern raised at the last meeting, the request for lightning arresters to be placed on the system if feasible. We've also added those to the plans. Again, we didn't view the lightning as a significant risk on the site, given the height of the system relative to surrounding structures. But we have added arresters, just as an extra layer redundancy. The proposed underground line going out to Piper Road remains the same. There's been no proposed changes to the interconnection route. Thank you. Which, again, will go underground through Discovery Way before surfacing and having a series of poles owned by EverSource out to Piper Road. Overall, we felt that this was an improvement that could be done and was negotiated with the landowner, again, to produce a location that was better, would reduce the impacts to abutting neighbors, and still provided for a system that was buildable and safe, as was with the previous design. We also looked at sound impacts, which were submitted to the Board of Health, sound analysis of both existing and proposed sound levels. That analysis shows that the proposed retaining wall will provide a significant amount of sound mitigation, and as long as there's 12 feet of barrier between the system and the east, west, and southern property, or excuse me, limit of work boundaries, 12 feet of barrier will provide enough sound mitigation to comply with the EP's sound regulations. So there may need to be some additional sound barrier material, likely on the east and west sides of the project. So that would be in the form of an appropriate, likely metal sound barrier. And then on the southern edge, the existing, or excuse me, the proposed retaining wall would provide that sound mitigation. Apart from that, we discussed with the Board of Health a number of other factors about the project, provided a resubmitted application at their request. Then we also provided a UL 9548 fire test report for the system to the Board of Health, as well as just confirming additional information regarding emergency ventilation of gases, other structural component information for the system, and just generally answers to questions the Board of Health had for us, again, inclusive of sound, among other concerns. We closed that last meeting. We identified some additional items that they would like to see submitted, primarily follow-ups, some additional revisions to the emergency response plan, some additional information regarding specific components of the response plan, and some additional follow-up information for our sound analysis in the form of a mitigation plan. We do anticipate submitting all those to the Board of Health, and hopefully, ahead of the next meeting, submitting all that information to their satisfaction and closing out with the Board of Health in hopeful approval. So what we intend to do is just come to the Select Board tonight, identify any remaining questions, concerns the Board had. One concern that, or I should say, point that was raised by the Board of Health Chair was that typically they have issued permits for projects that have already received zoning approvals. So I think there was some clarity. We saw it just in terms of avoiding a situation where one board was waiting until the other decided before issuing a decision. So that was one point we wanted to clarify tonight as well. And I'll stop there. That's the majority of the updates, and happy to answer any questions or clarify anything on that front.
Thank you. David?
Hi. Just two quick questions for me. The location of the hydrant, where is that going to be?
Sure. Yeah, good question. So when speaking to the fire department, the requirement from the fire department was that a hydrant be within a minimum of 150 feet to the closest piece of equipment. So we had proposed a new hydrant line leading up to the previous location to comply with that. With this new location, it's on the plan, sorry, I'm trying to look. I believe it's 80, it's around 80 feet setback from the existing hydrant that's on site. So, and that's our, excuse me, that's our engineer. Yeah, sorry, 72 feet. So that is the existing hydrant on site, so there won't be a need for a new hydrant to be installed. It's fairly adjacent to the system.
Understood. So that's basically across the driveway?
Just across the parking lot, yeah.
Right. And you mentioned the sound barriers. What do you think the source of the sound is? The inverters?
Sure. So the sound analysis modeled, there's two primary sources of sound. The inverters, as with solar projects, do produce measurable sound, as well as the HVAC equipment associated with the cooling systems for the batteries. So that's typically fan noise that's generated by those units. So our consultant models each of those point sources of sound when assessing the overall sound emitted from the system.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, want me to make my comments after people ask questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Questions from other members of the Board?
Chair?
My sense from looking at the plan is that the trees you're going to be removing, if this project goes forward, are the fir trees that were planted, you know, sort of right near the building in the grassy area? I wanted to check that with you and to find out anything you knew about either the age or size of the trees or the type of the trees.
Sure. So that is correct. The majority of the tree clearing now with this proposed design is those existing, that row of trees you mentioned along the edge of the parking lot. I don't have an exact count on the size or the species name for you, but it was discussed with the land, the property owner, that those trees would be taken down. The property owner hasn't requested, and, you know, replacement plantings, obviously, we would look to replace as part of the decommissioning plan any plantings that were done or removed as part of the footprint. In terms of the tree line that's further up the slope toward the southern property boundary, those trees are just along the edge. There are a number of mature, pretty tall trees that are within that overall stand. Closer to that edge toward the parking lot, it is like a, I'd say, like a more younger growth. They're not as old, mature trees. So compared to the previous design, we certainly anticipate removing quite a fewer, less trees than we did previously, especially mature ones. So don't, again, don't have an exact count, but that's something that is a big improvement over the previous design.
Here, Major.
Thank you. Yes, a few quick questions. One is, I know that you've been working closely with the planning department. I was wondering if you could share any of the recent work that you've done, what were their biggest concerns, and what have you been specifically working through? And then the other question I wanted, or actually, more of a comment slash question. One thing that was mentioned during our Board of Health meeting was that we are, you mentioned that we did move from a 160-feet setback to a 269-feet setback, so about 100 feet extra, which I know a lot of residents said wasn't enough, and it isn't much more of a setback. And so I was wondering, did you have any further discussions on potentially additional location changes, or is this something that you feel like is set in stone based on the work that you've done analyzing the area?
Sure, thank you. So in regard to the first question, and sorry, could you repeat again your first question?
Yeah, absolutely. Planning Department.
Sorry, Planning Department, thank you. So we've received confirmation from the planning department that from at least their purview and perspective, the application is good to go, and from a technical perspective, it meets planning requirements and complies with the zoning bylaw in terms of open space and net floor area, et cetera. The updated plan has been submitted to GCG for, as part of the peer review process. Prior to the site plan revision, we had submitted a letter to GCG in response to the original comments they had. We anticipated closing all those comments out at the time with the new design. We don't anticipate any new comments or comments that we didn't already have previously. So we are still waiting on that updated letter from GCG, but we do anticipate, you know, no new comments that we hadn't already previously responded to. So we definitely anticipate that closing out without issue. And in regard to your second question on siting, and sorry, if I misspoke earlier, I think it's 259 feet from the previous, like you said, about 100 feet increase. We did talk with the landowner about multiple locations on the site. When looking at siting on the property, there's a number of considerations to think about. You have the riverfront area to the east, along the eastern property boundary and parking lot edge. There's septic underground in the north. lot edge, there's septic underground in the northern portion of the parking lot, wetlands to the northwest, obviously, the zoning setbacks for the parcel itself, limitations to siting from the just subdivision of the parcel itself. And then where can we on-site have the least amount of tree clearing and additional impact and maximize open space? And then simply, you know, at the end of the day, we also have to work with the landowner on where is, and accept a location with them, so. And looking at many, again, we went through, I think, 10-plus conceptual designs, when looking at different locations, and when taking into consideration all factors, we really do feel like this location is the most optimal on-site. It is the least amount of tree clearing of any location that we consider that the property owner would accept. In terms of setbacks from property lines, again, when we cite projects, we go back to NFPA 55, which is the National Fire Code recommendations on setbacks for lithium-ion systems. They require 100-foot setback for lithium-ion batteries from property lines. If they don't certify to UL-9548 standards, systems that are certified to UL-9548 standards have significantly reduced setbacks to property lines and buildings. We feel that approximately 260 feet of setback from the property line is, excuse me, the closest residence, is a very appropriate setback, and certainly above and beyond what NFPA 55 recommends. We also still wanted to make sure we maintained an appropriate setback of approximately 100 feet from the existing office building as well. This location allows ease of access off the parking lot, no new access road to be built, is close to the existing hydrant on-site as well, and also maximizes setbacks from the environmental resource areas. So, kind of taking into consideration all factors, we did feel like this was a really appropriate location, and we were happy that we could find an improvement over the original design.
The one observation that I might make is that your landlord's property was subject to a site plan approval process some years ago, which included a fairly comprehensive landscaping plan. So certainly, any of the buffer plantings that were planted as part of that process that might be removed at this point would certainly have to be replaced, or else your landlord would not be in compliance with his or her site plan.
Were those plantings part of the site plan for the addition of the building, or the, we can confirm with planning if it was part of the, I assume it was the addition, the 20,000 square foot addition to the building, not the cell tower development?
There was a, I remember going out in my previous role and inspecting after the addition was put on, and we had to sign off on the landscaping plan at that point. So, and that was sort of over and above the original site plan approval, so that's something that would certainly have to work into your consideration for buffer planting around there.
Yeah, we can absolutely follow up with planning and make sure whatever compliance needs to occur, and if there needs to be part of the request for a decision to incorporate any kind of, you know, waivers with existing requirements, or, you know, some potential alternative, we can look into that as well.
Thank you. David?
Yes, I'd like to just cover some of the concerns that people have had. Last time I spoke about the, you know, a number of people have said that they're concerned that the system might explode, and again, I have to say that lithium batteries don't explode. Chemical explosions require that the oxidizer be mixed with the fuel, in this case, there's no oxygen mixed with the lithium, they don't explode. In fact, just the opposite is true, lithium battery fires tend to start slowly and smolder. They can smolder for hours or even days. This system can, like a lot of monitoring systems for lithium batteries can, detect preconditions of a fire and shut itself down. It also has been tested against thermal runaway and is actively vented to prevent the buildup of gases. Some people are also concerned about the toxic gases that could be produced in a fire, and so I'd just like to note that all fires produce toxic smoke. In lithium, in the case of lithium batteries, the lithium batteries often, almost always contain fluorine, and so the fluorine can produce hydrogen fluoride in the presence of water and heat. But, like I was saying, all fires produce toxic gases, you know, even natural gas fires produce nitrogen dioxide, gasoline fires produce, release benzene and sulfur dioxide. I think the most important thing is to prevent a fire in the first place, right? Significant design improvements have been made to lithium batteries to make them more safe. Batteries are now so safe that we're comfortable carrying them in our pockets, on our wrists, in our ears, we give them to our children, we park them in our garages, we attach them to our houses. Lithium batteries are everywhere, and we're comfortable with them. We, you know, probably everybody here has a phone in their hand. In fact, lithium batteries are much safer than fossil fuels, and that's, you know, just for the sake of comparison, electric car fires happen in order of, less than an order of magnitude less than gasoline car fires. It's, the lithium car, the lithium battery fires make the news because they are so unusual. You know, and we don't have, you know, gasoline in gas stations is dangerous, natural gas in our houses are dangerous, but we manage those things so that they're not very dangerous. And in this case, they're even much less dangerous than that, right? The lithium batteries are much less dangerous than fossil fuels. Finally, I'd like to discuss the need for this facility. During last summer's power outages, residents expressed concern with the reliability of our local power grid. This storage facility addresses local grid issues and helps us transition to clean energy. Although the wider grid, as pointed out by Jim in the last meeting, although the wider grid doesn't currently waste excess solar electricity, it's a chicken-and-egg thing, in my opinion. We don't want to wait for it to have to spill solar electricity before we decide how to save it. I also have a number of small conditions that we can add, that are more or less technical conditions on the lighting and things, if we decide to move forward with approval. I will note also that there is no reason to do either the Select Board approval first, the site plan special permit first, or the Board of Health approval first. They can happen in either order.
Thank you. Any other comments from the Board? Jim?
I have a question, maybe this is, are there planning staff available? Yeah, so I would love to get an explanation about the 10-foot landscape buffer issue that they were raised in the most recent issue, and understand it. It seemed like there was a solution implied here in the description, it did seem to require some Select Board action to make it possible, so I wanted to get a description of the problem and the solution from someone on the planning staff, because it was, it's a little too, I couldn't quite interpret all the abbreviations.
Hello, Mr. Chair, I'm Kristin Gushard, planning director, I'm here tonight, virtually.
Please do.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can hear you. To the question about the 10-foot buffer and any other elements of the question that we just said?
Great. So typically, for a parking lot, you need to have a 10-foot landscape buffer around it. In this particular situation, the applicant has proposed putting the facility directly next to the parking lot, thereby removing that 10-foot buffer directly around the parking lot. There is a section of the zoning bylaw that allows for basically a waiver, if you can prove that you could otherwise fit a requirement like a landscape buffer, and if it is in the best interest, basically, of the community. In this particular case, it's very clear that a 10-foot buffer could still remain, and this facility could still fit and meet all other zoning requirements and regulations. They didn't submit, you know, a proof plan, but the previous plan that they submitted would suffice as that, because it's clear that, just looking at this, you would know and be able to tell based on the dimensions, that the previous plan could also serve as that proof plan, if the Board was inclined to grant that. In regards to Select Board member Charter's question about the previous landscape plan from the site plan that allowed for the 20,000-square-foot addition, the landscaping requirements for that particular amendment was around the proposed building, so on the north side of the parking lot, directly adjacent to the building, rather than the south side of the parking lot where this particular facility is located.
Mr. Chair, may I ask the planning director a question?
Please, yeah.
Kristin, would we be allowed, as a condition, to ask for an equivalent number of trees be planted as, to account for the same number of trees being removed?
I think that could be something, if the applicant is willing to do that, they seem to express a willingness to replace those trees, so it sounds like something that could be accommodated in a condition.
Thank you.
Jim?
The remaining issues I have are all being handled by the Board of Health with a much greater depth of expertise and detail than I feel like I can bring to this choice, so I'm happy to move towards a decision by the Board, and, you know, clearly condition it on the Board of Health's review.
Thank you. Jim, who am I, Jim?
Sorry, yes, Kristin, I have a quick question for you. I know the applicants mentioned that they're just waiting for GCG, and I'm wondering if you have any updates on that?
I do not have any updates from GCG at this time. They indicated that they were hoping to get revised comments back to us by the end of last week, by Friday, but we have not received them to date.
Okay, thank you.
I will entertain any questions from the audience, comments.
So, Mr. Martin, you said about fires, you know, last Thursday, there was a fire in Wakefield, Massachusetts, where a Tesla crashed into a god wheel, and when they removed it, it burst into flames. It took three hours and 20,000 gallons of water to put out that fire. The temperatures rose to like 200, 2,500 degrees Fahrenheit. Another concern I have is hazardous waste, say like 10 years down the road. If you remember, the Grace Corporation with their lagoons and how they polluted all our walls, so I'm concerned about, a little bit about hazardous waste, since this is new technology, we don't know what's going to happen 10 years down the road. And I wouldn't want this in my backyard, I don't know if any of you would want it in your backyard, so it's a concern for citizens in Acton to have, I wouldn't want it in my backyard.
Thank you.
John Richardson from 8 Arborwood Road. Just a clarification question, do I understand that this Board can approve it now, even though you do not have the report, the report has not been submitted by the Board of Health? Is that correct? Yes, David?
David?
Yes, that's correct, we may approve this in either order, approve or disapprove it in either order, right? So if we approve it, and the Board of Health either didn't approve it or added conditions, we don't negate those Board of Health conditions. Does that make sense?
So, for, again, clarification, if the Board of Health does not approve it, does that mean that it is contingent that the Select Board not approve it as well?
No, if either of us disapproves it, it couldn't go through.
Oh, if either of you disapprove, it cannot go through?
That's correct.
All right, thank you very much.
Do we have anyone online? We have someone in the audience?
They can go first. I might have to...
Please come forward.
Okay. Sorry, I ran out of the house, I'm a mess right now. Angela Morrison, Brucewood Road. So I just wanted to make a few general comments about everything that has been said so far tonight. So, first thing is, I feel like a lot of Board members are bringing up house batteries and watches and phones, and trying to compare that to an ESS system. When you compare the size of a battery on your watch, or your phone, or your computer, it's very different than 3,000 pounds of batteries sitting in a parking lot, so a fire for a watch battery versus an ESS battery is a very different beast, and I don't want those two to be compared, because I don't think it's right to be, because one's this big, one's, I don't know, probably the size of this area right here, is what I'm imagining, right? And then the other thing that I just want to bring up is, I feel like with the sound study being done, and you guys removing trees, it's going to just magnetize, I feel like, what the tree's there right now, right? The sound study is going to say, all right, the existing trees, this is what the decibel is above what's legal, right? Once you cut down more trees, obviously, that sound decibel's going to increase again, right? Because we already have that vegetation and the trees that are bouncing off it in the other direction, but then once you cut them down, where's the barrier at that point, and how is that going to be offset? The other thing is, at a past meeting, they said any trees that have the potential of falling on the battery system need to be removed. Now, it's saying only those little shrubs in the beginning. We've asked several times for the area to be marked out, spray the trees that are going to get removed, it hasn't happened yet, so I feel like they're kicking the can down the road a little bit, so that we don't actually see how much is going to get removed, but there's some trees in that area, my dad's a tree guy, that are 100 to 120 feet tall. So if this is within that vicinity, those are going to have to get removed for the safety of the neighborhood, because they said previously that all the trees in that vicinity need to get removed. So if they do fall down, if there is one 120 feet high, and it does fall down, that could cause an explosion by the impact of the tree. So, I think before anything gets approved, the area needs to be marked out, and the trees need to be marked, and then decided on if that's the correct area that was stated would be removed, and then the sound decibel needs to factor in those removals of the trees. I live on Brucewood, I can hear the highway already, just in the middle of the night, with the leaves gone. So, if more trees are getting cut down, I'm only going to hear the trucks more. And the other thing is, Mr. Carter, you did your research, they do have a few contingencies on prior projects that said those big trees need to stay in place, but that was for the cell tower, too. They went around and did a little video and pictures of all these areas in our neighborhood so that none of the neighbors could see through, even during the winter months, and those trees were to remain there so that we didn't see it. Sorry, I moved my hands a lot. So that was, those are the main points that I wanted to bring up, and then the other, the only other thing is, I feel like every time a concern is brought up, it's, again, kicked down the road, like, one of the things was, how fast is the expert going to get there if there is a fire? And two meetings ago, it said up to an hour if traffic was good. At the last meeting, there was no answer. Three meetings ago, they said the ESS systems that they have in place now have been around for one to two years. At the last meeting, they couldn't recall how long they've been there. So I feel like it's a lot of, I, give me an answer that you want to hear, and then, oh, that wasn't a good answer, so let's not repeat it, and that's kind of how the entire neighborhood's feeling with this entire project of, this is the best place, we complain about it, oh, no, no, now this is the best place. So I feel like our interest in our safety hasn't been factored in from the very beginning, and it's just, let me give you a little carrot now, for us to dangle in front of you. And that's why I think you guys got 85 emails already. And that's, I know, some haven't been posted, because mine from last week hasn't been posted to a website yet, so I know there's still emails that are to be posted to that public site, but that's my concern. So I'm super passionate, I love my neighbors, I've lived in Acton for like 13 years, I moved to this neighborhood two years ago, and... I moved to this neighborhood two years ago, and literally, I love them, love them. So I just want to protect them as much as I can. That's all.
Thank you. Matt, would you let the first caller in, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Rachel Wilson. Rachel, you should be able to speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Rachel Wilson, I live at 12 Bruce Wood Road. Some of the concerns I have, I know I've already mentioned many of them, but similar to what Angela just mentioned, I would really like the site to be flagged out, and I would like them to flag the trees they plan on removing. I'm a bit concerned that they say it's going to be a very small amount of trees or close to no trees, and the next thing we know, all of the trees are gone. So I don't know if it's possible to condition the permit on, you know, if they flag out the trees and then allow the board members and the residents to go actually view what they plan on removing, because when I went over into that parking lot, I was a bit shocked at how close the houses were. And then make the site plan approval, if the board wants to approve it, conditional upon only removing those trees that have been so designated. Because I'm just suspect as to how many trees are going to be removed. And I think that goes back to the overall, this is supposed to be environmentally friendly and green, and there are 358 parking spaces on this particular parcel, they need something in the magnitude of 50. I realize that Blue Wave can't build this if the property owner is not approving them to build it on a certain location, and that they do have a bunch of constraints, but maybe this just isn't the right site for this facility. Because it seems to me that there should be somewhere in the parking lot that's already paved and not up against the neighborhood and not causing sound issues, that would be a better place for something like this. It isn't need to be connected to any large solar farm, because there is no large solar farm, so. I have that, and then the motion detecting light, which is back on this, I would ask that the board not have a motion detector light on the east, south, or west, so neighbors aren't being, looking at lights. And then my other question was about sound, but I think that's Board of Health. So if it is something that's in the select board purview, I am curious to how that works, that if, once they build this, do they need to do another sound study immediately after? If they exceed the mass-to-EP sound decibel limits, do they need to shut down the facility until that's mitigated, or do they continue operating? We get a visual rendering of what the 12-foot visual sound barrier might look like? I guess, in all, I just, I feel like they're trying to make this fit in a place that maybe it just doesn't fit. Maybe the town should offer up something near the transfer station, and the town could get the money from the lease. Just a thought. That's all I have.
Thank you. Matt, next?
This is Martin Pittwood. Martin, you should be able to speak.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Oh, wonderful, thank you. Yes, thank you. My name is Martin Pittwood, I live at 13 Arborwood Road. Problem with going this long into the list is that other people have made some of my points already, so I'll reiterate those quickly and focus more on the parts that people haven't mentioned yet. But as has been mentioned, many of the residents of the neighborhood to the south, of whom I'm one, are deeply worried about the safety of this proposal. I don't think that the board member comparing these systems to cell phones is at all appropriate. Cell phones are 10 to 12, maybe 15 watt hours. This system is just under 24 megawatt hours. So if you want to compare it to cell phones, you can compare it to 2 million of them. Specifically, a concern in this proposal is the amount of the electrolyte in those batteries, 6,104 gallons of lithium hexafluorophosphate. It is possible for this to break down during thermal runaway and create hydrogen fluoride gas and other toxic gases such as hydrogen chloride, carbon monoxide, and so on. Blue Wave's own emergency response plan says that this can happen. Scientific reports I've studied show that a battery of this size could emit between 470 kilograms and over four tons of hydrogen fluoride gas alone, which is incredibly corrosive and nasty stuff. At the Board of Health meeting, Blue Wave referred to a document that shows that hydrogen fluoride was not emitted during the testing of the cells used in this proposal. That is true, but it is important to recognize this document does not state that HF gas cannot be emitted, it only states that it was not emitted during that particular test. There are now dozens of examples of BESS systems that have had thermal runaway events around the world, including in the U.S., and these systems have only been around for a few years. They have caught fire, they do catch fire, they continue to catch fire, they're difficult to extinguish, they can explode. Residents have sent the board many news reports and investigations after accidents to the select board, so I don't understand why the select board member says that they don't happen. I would love to see evidence on that topic, because I'd like to improve my education on it. I've not found anything to say that it doesn't happen. Everything I've read says that it can, and it does. It's already been mentioned that the subject matter expert needs to attend an incident before it can be declared safe for the firefighters to start fighting the fire, if a fire happens. And that the subject matter expert can be an hour away, maybe. I don't think we actually got a good answer to how far away, and certainly not with traffic. So our firefighters are standing there, unable to fight the fire, maybe they can just stop it spreading, but they can't actually attack the fire and the battery system itself for an hour or maybe more. All that time, the potential for that hydrogen fluoride emission is increasing while they wait. Residences, as has been stated, start 260 feet to the south, and there is an elementary school, kind of a school, only 1,700 feet away to the north, across Route 2. It's not very far for a big gas cloud. I urge the members of the board to deny this proposal a permit. It is immature technology that doesn't belong so near to our residents and schoolchildren. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, next?
Michael Schalls. Michael, you should be able to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. I thought Martin did just a great job just a couple of seconds ago, and he brought up a lot of points that I wanted to, the 1,600 gallons of hexafluorophosphate, which I only learned about two weeks ago. My God, that'll be sitting in those boxes for the next five, 10, 15, 20 years. Even if it doesn't explode, it could eventually leach into the ground and our groundwater, just like the Grace stuff did. And that's just an awful prospect. I want to urge the select board to not vote tonight, because I think the idea of actually getting the flag tree, I mean, the trees flagged, and touring the area, so you could see just how many trees are going to get cut down and where. These trees are huge back there, there's 100-foot pines, 100-foot oaks, and I'm not sure why Jim in particular is ready to pass this on to the BOH, but the next thing is, I'd like to also urge the board not to vote tonight, because what you're looking at, unless things change at the very last minute, and I've been watching carefully, but you're looking at a draft proposal. It's not even a complete proposal, so I don't see how you can vote on a draft. I mean, a draft means that they can edit it later, right? I mean, at least, that's my interpretation. And finally, I'd like to say that I see no difference whatsoever between 100 feet away from some houses and, or an entire neighborhood, heavily wooded neighborhood, or 200 feet away. That just seems, there's no difference. The only difference is that now to the north, there would be a paved area, although I feel really sorry for the people in 100 Discovery Way, the Ram Hill people, they'll have no sound barrier whatsoever, that thing will be humming or even blasting away at above Massachusetts guidelines, day and night, because they won't have a sound barrier. Even if we do, I wonder what it would look like at 12 feet high. But there's just no difference. The original proposal and the current proposal are almost exactly the same, and they both are saying that we should post, we should place these, these boxes full of incredibly explosive hazardous materials and experimental technology, basically, that's only six years old, within 200 feet of adults, their kids, pets, whatever. It just doesn't make sense to me, so thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Matt, next?
Alma Sandman. Alma, you should be able to speak.
Hi, I'm wondering, it appears to me that the property owner seems to be controlling the actual placement of where this facility is going to be, and it seems like he's more amenable to having it above the neighborhood than to the properties that he wants to rent. At this point, Middlesex Gastroenterology is there, Ram Hill, Acton Medical, so is, I'm wondering, does he have a concern that if this, if these batteries are up close and personal to his tenants, that they will move, and then he's going to have a problem renting out the facility? That's number one. And number two, I'm not sure why you need to vote tonight when you haven't heard from the Board of Health. I understand if the Board of Health says no, then it's dead in the water, but I just don't understand why you wouldn't listen to the expertise from the Board of Health, one of your boards, before you make the final decision. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Matt, do we have anyone else?
That concludes the hands, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Yes, Tara, I want to speak to the neighbors, because when you get down to the end of one of these large, complicated projects, in my experience, it's the best, and hopefully the select board agrees, too, to propose a draft approval, so that people can see the conditions, see everything in writing, as well as a draft denial, so that then you can see both, and you're voting for one or the other, as opposed to what's happened for decades, effectively, that only the draft approval is drafted. And then the select board members are kind of in a place where they don't know what they could be saying if they were going to deny. And so I found it very good, or very helpful, at least when I was a select board member, to see what a draft denial would look like, because it might be really attractive. And so I urge those two things, and the neighbors, please get your favorite select board member to ask for a draft denial letter. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, Alyssa Nichols, School Street. Before I begin my comments, I just want to make sure that I have a clear recollection. This is our fourth best system, or would be if it was approved. Is that accurate? There's one at the high school, Acton Water District just opened one, and...
I think, I think you're accurate in that.
Third or fourth. My question is, are they all, all the other ones that have been built coupled with a solar array? Yes, okay. So I've been, okay, first of all, I want to say, you don't need to make a decision tonight, because the hearing has been continued, and you have an April 23 decision date. So if some of you still have concerns that are based on what's going to come out of the Board of Health, why not wait? Also, I don't know how common it is for the select board to make a decision before getting peer review. I know last hearing, you were concerned of having not heard from Planning Department, and it doesn't seem like they can give you a full picture of their recommendation without that peer review. So that's another reason I think that you should wait for GCG's review. I share all of the abutters' concerns about tree flagging. Sure, the line of trees that was planted along the parking lot, maybe, you know, there's eight, nine, 10 trees that are proposed to be removed, and the applicant has been really accommodating to, you know, plant certain species, plant a certain amount, they've moved the location, they've shrunk the footprint. I think they're working really hard to work with the town and work with the residents' concerns. But Angela's right, there is also a concern about taller trees that are on the other side, and being fall hazards, and we need to have those trees flagged, because this town, in the last year, has had some pretty contentious projects that were approved with the expectation that trees would stay, that were then later removed, because they were in the middle of a sidewalk or blocking somebody's view. So I think that the neighbors should have the ability to go and look at every single tree that's going to be removed, especially since they have a landscaping plan that was put in place for the approval of that cell tower. I also think that if this plant, this project gets approved, the select board and the town staff has a real opportunity here to create something in the zoning that requires that these systems be coupled with solar arrays. I appreciate what you're saying about the chicken and egg, you know, we can't wait for storage systems, we can't wait for the solar to be built before we build the storage systems, but this system is really greenwashing. It's not, you know, the whole zoning decision, I don't sit on the Zoning Board of Appeals, but I think that's a real stretch to decide that this is a warehouse, because it stores electricity, and state law allows for the storage of electricity to be considered a warehouse if it facilitates renewable energy. It shaves the peak, it doesn't do anything to facilitate renewable energy. It would if it had a solar array attached to it. So I think that the town really needs to do that, take that step to make a requirement for future projects. And I also think that the town needs to somehow figure out how to help guide these companies to property owners, because Blue Wave sends out cold letters, and they wait for a property owner to respond, hey, I'm interested. But the town, with the knowledge in the Planning Department of the properties in town and the needs in town, could actually identify suitable parcels and make connections between those property owners and these companies that want to build these battery storage systems. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Further discussion from the board. Fran?
I just would feel comfortable maybe hearing from GCG first, and possibly the Board of Health. That's where I'm at.
Thank you. Other comments? Jim?
I'm persuaded we're not entirely ready, and that there's no particular rush because of the, you know, the Planning Board hearing on the 7th and our deadline of April to come up with a final decision. So I would suggest that we require a tree removal and a tree planting plan before we make a decision. Also, the GCG, as you mentioned, Fran, I think that's, that's a good, you know, crossing the T and dotting the I kind of thing to do. The other issues, again, I'm happy to wait for the, I'm happy to have the Board of Health weigh in on them, but those two things do seem to be within our purview.
Thank you. Hear me, Jim?
Thank you. Yes, so I service the liaison for the Board of Health, and I know that a lot of the discussion, there was a lot of safety concerns raised by residents, and the applicant said that they would provide more information to the Board of Health. I think I would like to see the emergency preparedness plan. I think that even though I don't serve as a Board of Health member, we... I think that even though I don't serve as a Board of Health member, we don't serve as Board of Health members, understanding the health and safety concerns, I think, should fall on all of our shoulders as elected officials, and so, would like to see that. So, yeah, I, I do feel comfortable, and to add to what Jim said, I think asking for the tree markings would be helpful. That was something that was raised at Board of Health, too. So, requiring that as part of maybe a motion that we can make today, as well as a Board of Health approval, and also a thumbs up from GCG, I think, would be my top concerns.
Thank you. David.
So, I, I think that's okay. My only concern is that, that the Board of Health seemed to be waiting for us at some level, right? And usually, a project passes zoning before it gets approved by the Board of Health. And, you know, the site plan, special permit is essentially a zoning decision. So, I think it's a little odd that we would wait. And, you know, we've, we've seen one hearing by the Board of Health, and so I think that makes me a little bit uncomfortable. I went and, yeah, I, I agree that it would be really nice to know where the trees were. I went and looked where I thought that, that, um, the project would be, and I counted eight trees. And there are maybe 10-inch diameter trees. They're, they're quite short, they're conifers. They're, they're quite short. I don't know exactly what species they are, or variety they are. They're 20 feet tall, maybe. And they're not, not close to the, the forest line, they're right along the parking lot, if I'm correct, in the sighting of the project. And so, I, but my main thing is, it's a little odd to go back and forth here with the Board of Health, when normally we would approve first, and then the, um, health and safety concerns would be done by the Board of Health.
Thank you.
Yes, so while this is a zoning, technically a zoning condition, one of the parts of the zoning decision is whether or not it benefits the community, which isn't something you can measure out, like, is it a 10-foot setback? So, whether or not the Board of Health thinks it is or isn't, and has concerns, maybe the Board of Health doesn't feel comfortable disapproving it, I feel like whether it benefits the community is something that's a judgment for our elected officials, and so I hope you do wait to hear what they have to say. Thank you.
One other thing to add on to that, sorry, Angela again. It's not only just the benefit of the community, but also the safety of the community is another aspect of that, too. So, just think, if the Board of Health qualifies, this project doesn't mean necessarily you guys have to, if you guys factor in all of the safety concerns of the entire neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you. So, to the applicant, I think the, I think the concerns you, you had asked to see if the Select Board had any particular issues, I think you've heard several. One is a real desire to see the proposed tree removals flagged in the field. I think if you can, when you do that, if you so agree to notify our Planning Director that that's been done. I think we still got the GCG peer review that we're still waiting for. I know that's kind of on us. The Planning Director's still waiting to receive that, so I think that's important. Obviously, a big concern is, is the Board of Health hazmat permits, which I understand there, the Board will probably be, the Board of Health will probably be dealing with that later on in February. Are there any other issues that Select Board's raised that you'd like to bring up right now? Jim.
I think in addition to flagging the trees, having a plan would be very helpful, especially if, if we do end up approving the project, which I don't know if we're going to do, but if we do, being able to refer to a plan, you know, and adding that as a condition, that, you know, no additional trees come down, would be, you know, that would be an appropriate thing, too. And also, if there are places where they want to, where they would propose to plant trees, that would be great to get that marked out in the plan, too.
Thank you. David.
Mr. Chair, could I read my proposed set of conditions that I would have offered if we were having a motion today?
Please do.
So, I'll just, I'll just read them. That lighting be on the north side of the facility and adhere to our lighting bylaw with downward focus lights and warmer than 3,000 K color. That a fire hydrant be located to the satisfaction of the Fire Department, I think that's done, but I was still, I was still adding it as a condition. Adherents to the recommendations from the GCG peer review to the satisfaction of the Planning Department. Adherents to conditions from the Board of Health. And to plant an equivalent number of significant trees for any trees removed. So, those were my, my conditions in, in the, in the draft. So, they overlap with a lot of things that people have said here, so.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
What is the benefit of having this company in Acton? I mean, what, what's in it for us?
That really is not something that is germane to our discussion about a zoning approval.
Okay, but I mean, why are we doing this? I mean, is it for money? I mean, is it worth the money?
It's called capitalism.
Why? But this is a business we want. I mean, is it worth the money to have these guys in here?
Can I just add?
Fran, please.
I might be off base, but it is someone's private property, right?
Yeah, I understand. I'm a capitalist, I'm a big capitalist, but I'm just, but sometimes you can say, it's not worth it.
Tara Frederickson, this is why we have a special permit, that the town meeting voted to have a condition that it has to benefit the community. So, I feel like it's an important question to just promote capitalism, profit for the few, but while the town then absorbs all these risks and costs, potential damage to its water, et cetera, et cetera, I feel like it's really important to understand that there's a difference between ruthless capitalism at all costs and responsible private enterprise, that which the, I believe that the special permit was designed to ensure that a project is the responsible private enterprise, as opposed to ruthless capitalism. Thank you.
Thank you. David.
Thank you. If I can address your question, the biggest direct benefit to the town is to add robustness to our grid. So, last summer, we had a couple of blackouts here. One especially was due to inadequacies of our, our grid when everybody had their, excuse me, air conditioners on. At that time, Eversource parked three diesel generators around town, in case we stressed the grid again. I don't think those generators were ever started, but they were parked around, on various streets in town for a while. Facilities like this add robustness to our, our grid at times that it's, it's stressed, like, hot days in the summer or cold days in the winter.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I just do want to add as well, we have started discussions with the Assessors Office as well. The project would have, we'd be looking into a pilot agreement with the town, so there would be also additional personal property tax revenue to the town in a sizable amount.
I'm not sure we've got the votes on the board to, to close the hearing, but I would certainly entertain a motion if... David.
Mr. Chair, I would move to continue this hearing until our second meeting in November, which, sorry, February, that's February, which is, I'm sorry, just looking, it's the 27th, is that right? I move to continue this hearing to the 27th of February at 7:10 PM in this room.
Would the applicant be amenable to that?
We would be amenable to that. I just would want to clarify, if, you know, obviously, our hope is that we would have the Board of Health approval prior to that meeting, but in the chance that we don't, that there would be an expectation that the items just listed, the flagging, GCG comments, if those are closed out, that we could still, you know, that the Board of Health approval could be a condition, as was mentioned, if it's not obtained at that point.
Well, I, I would certainly hope that that would be our last hearing. I think, you know, the, the big question mark obviously would be what you get from the Board of Health. But I, I think we've pretty much surfaced all of the issues that we have here. So, I think if, if you are, if the applicant agrees, I will take a vote with the board to continue this until February 27th, 2023, at 7:10 PM in this room.
If I just quickly, so I believe the GCG review is imminent, and then the, the flagging could be done relatively quickly. I'm just curious, would it be possible to pull it up to the next Select Board hearing? I'm not sure the date of that one exactly, but earlier February.
Could you repeat, repeat that, please?
At the end of the day, would it be possible, when's the next Select Board hearing? I think we're skipping one. Can we, can we have this continue to that next hearing, not the end of February?
That would be the 6th, 6th of February. David.
Yes, I was just going to point out what the audience pointed out, that, that we could satisfy, I think, everything else except for the results of the Board of Health hearing at that time. If, if the members here wanted to do that, that's fine, too. It depends what, what members' feelings are.
I guess my concern is that the Board of Health review might, when it's completed, might reveal issues that would, you know, tip us away from, you know, so we're basically balancing the benefit to the grid and to the local Acton grid against, you know, some increased risk to the neighbors. And the Board of Health is surfacing information to let us understand how to weigh that. So, yeah, I, I would rather wait till the 27th.
David.
I just want to ask maybe Himijah as liaison, if you think the Board of Health will go ahead without the zoning permit? I mean, if, if, if we're, if we get to the, you know, you know, the 27th, you know, if they get to the 7th and say, well, they still haven't approved, we're not going to approve, and then we get to the 27th. So, if you're, I, I'm okay with this timeline, as long as, you know, you're confident that they will do whatever they're going to do on, on the 6th without making it conditioned on the zoning approval.
I think that, I think that they would be okay voting. I think they might condition it on our approval, like, if they say yes, for us, it does meet the health and safety concerns that we've had, this addresses it, and then we're just waiting on our decision as a Select Board regarding zoning. I could see them adding that as a contingency, but I think their biggest concern was, was making sure that, from a health and safety perspective, that everything was being met. So, I, I do see that happening, and that's something that I can speak to on the Board of Health meeting if need be. But, yeah, I, for me personally, so much of my decision is weighted on what BOH says, to the point where I would feel comfortable, similar to Jim, waiting for the later February meeting to make a decision.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this until the 27th. I believe that we have to have agreement from the applicant. John, can you, to continue this to that date?
Yeah, usually, we would have an agreement here in person, then memorialize it in a thing that the planning office does, is that, but if it's not here, then we don't expect that we get it afterwards.
I think we, yeah, a couple of times, we've done it, it's been emailed to us, and we've signed and emailed it back, so, yeah, that works.
All in favor of continuing until the, this hearing until 7:10 PM on February 27th, 2023? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you. See you on the 27th.
Thank you, board members.
Mr. Manjirati, Chair, yes, please come to the mic.
A few years back, when they wanted to put that daycare center up across from, from the Acton Police Station, and, you know, and then we, it was voted down at a town meeting, and then we, we as a town bought the land so that business wouldn't go in. So, is this because of the land, the landowner of this property? That's why this, I'm talking about revenue again, going back to the revenue issue. So, just having a high time understanding why, why this is going on, do you know what I'm trying to say? So, a few years back, we, we bought the land so the daycare center couldn't, couldn't go in. So, why don't we just buy the land so this company can't come in?
So, I mean, what, what's happened with that, that was approved at town meeting, is that property is now being transferred to the Acton Housing Authority for redevelopment for elderly and disabled housing, and you'll probably see groundbreaking on that, probably in late winter, early spring.
Okay, thanks.
So, one question on the battery thing, maybe you guys can ask them, because Martin just brought up that this is for the reliability of the grid. If this system's put in place, how many hours' worth of energy does the town actually get out of that battery system? Is it only a half hour worth of time, or is it three days' worth of energy? If it's only a half hour, I don't see the big deal. I love losing my energy, because then I don't have any technology and I can interact with my neighbors. But that's one of the questions that I just thought of, because you brought up the reliability of the grid. So, I want to know how much this 300-pound system is actually going to, you know, put energy out into the grid if there is an outage, and if it's worth it. I'll lose three hours a day of no energy all day long.
Thank you. Mr. Manjirati, the manager's update, please.
I do not have any updates for tonight. Thank you.
The chair's update, the only issue that I, point that I'd like to raise is that yesterday, I was pleased to attend the Lunar New Year celebration at the high school, sponsored by the Acton Chinese Language School. It was a great event, great to see a lot of people there. And in addition to Lunar New Year celebration, it was also their 20th anniversary operating here in Acton. I think it speaks a lot to the vibrancy and the diversity of our community. So, it was a great event. Comments from other members of the board? Himijah.
Thank you. Yes, just wanted to personally thank Dot and Tara, our former, now two West Acton Citizens' Library trustees for all their service. Serving on a board for a library has been very difficult nationally, especially because of disruptions with COVID and other issues that our libraries have to deal with every day. And they held themselves with such poise, and really did everything they could to represent the best interests of the Citizens' Library. So, really grateful for their service, and just wanted to give public recognition to that. They will be really missed. One thing that Dean and I are going to work on is trying to get this on a Select Board agenda soon, so that we can vote to appoint new trustees. This will be similar to the process that we just underwent, was it a few weeks ago, a few months ago? What is time anymore? For a net's appointment. So, we will be doing the same to fill in... So we will be doing the same to fill in the rest of the vacancies. But, yes, that's something we'll work to put on an agenda. But that's it from my end. Thanks.
Thank you. David?
Hi, yes, two things. A couple of weeks ago, I attended a memorial service for Tom Kelleher. Tom Kelleher was instrumental in getting the Asabet River Rail Trail built, and I worked with him a long time on that, because the work that I did on the train station overlapped with work he did on the Asabet River Rail Trail. In fact, he was still working on getting the uncompleted portions through Stowe complete at the time he died, and he'll be missed. Second thing, the Acton Boxborough School Committee had its preliminary reading of its budget at their last meeting. I think they have the first formal reading, this coming meeting. In order to meet our, or my, our really A L G's goals for the budget this year, they've had to make some, had to propose some pretty painful cuts to their budget. They have divided it up into four different levels, and they're talking about losing a section of first grade, losing significant administrators, and some teachers to the system. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
I think I've just got, oh, no, yeah, here's an announcement. So the OSRP, the Open Space and Recreation Plan Liaisons, met last Thursday night. You may remember that as a board, we talked about the OSRP goals and developed some feedback on those. I was able to, along with all the other liaisons, present our feedback in a structured way. There was a lot of overlap between what different groups were saying, so it felt like we were, you know, making progress towards both an amended set of goals that addressed our concerns, and we also made some progress on listing parts that would go into subgoals, so making a little bit of, a little bit of visit into the next part of the process. The other thing we learned is that the process certainly has a long way to go. One of the next steps is to gather input on how the prioritized parcel list is constructed and rated. And so I'll be coming back to the board at some point when they're ready for feedback on a proposed process. So we'll be in touch about that. Then a couple of events coming up. We're right, we're now in the middle of the Acton Planning Open House about the South Acton Vision. So anytime in the next two days, people are welcome to go to the Acton Memorial Library. There's displays out, there's places to gather feedback, you can learn about the survey results that were already done, and just encourage, you know, all of us and anyone listening to stop by there in the next couple of days. Let's see, Saturday, February 4th, at 2:00 p.m. I think John mentioned this a little while ago, but now that it's getting closer, I thought I'd mention it again. The League of Women Voters is sponsoring a meeting about planning for a local, nonpartisan, nonprofit news organization of some sort. And the meetings had a lot of interest. They're looking for people who both have ideas and who want to, you know, help dig in and make it happen. It's happened in other towns, including, you know, right next door in Concord. It's doable with the right level of energy and support. Let's see, oh, yeah, so already said that one. There was one more. Oh, yeah, yeah. Saturday, February 11th, 10:00 to 1:00 p.m. Green Acton is sponsoring its first Fix-It Clinic at the Memorial Library. So, you know, bring your, it'll have space, it'll have tools, it'll have experts to help you tinker or actually perhaps fix your small appliances, toys, devices, clothing, electronics. You can get more details by going to the greenacton.org front page. Green Acton's especially interested in this as a way of reducing waste. You know, so much of our stuff we throw away when it gets a little broken, and the skills to fix things are out there, but they're not evenly distributed. So the idea of a Fix-It Clinic is to bring people with broken things together with people that know how to fix them, and work together on, you know, not throwing away more stuff. That's it. Thanks.
So just to circle back a bit on the comments that Himijah made about the West Acton Library. There is a process that we'll have to follow. We will be discussing this on the board level at our meeting on February 6th. At that point, I will probably recommend that the board convene again on February 27th, and hopefully, we'll have some suitable applicants for those positions, and we can, we can take some action on filling those two open positions. These would be temporary trustees that would only serve from that point until just after town meeting, in which we would, town meeting would have the approval of a full board of trustees. So anybody that is thinking about it, tune back in on the 6th, there'll be more discussion here on the board. Next item on our agenda, consider a request from the Agricultural Commission to place a conservation restriction on the Morrison Farm parcel at 116 Concord Road. Okay, and could we get the first slide? How does that happen? It's in the slide set for the presentation. Okay, well, we'll bring it up. We didn't, we didn't understand that we would be presenting for you. Maybe not fully briefed on the total procedure for how to do this. Please identify yourself. Identify yourself. Oh, Patrick Hearn, Acton AgCom. I'm the clerk, and I request today is to get select board approval to go forward with the conservation restriction that we're proposing for Morrison Farm. And we'd like to go forward and take it to the town meeting for May 1st. So while that's coming up, I'll just, the slides are coming up, I'll just tell you a little bit about what we've been doing. So at the beginning of December, we had a meeting with the planning board and decided there might be just enough time to get initial feedback from Dean Charter and our select board liaison, and a couple of key people, like the Acton Conservation Trust, whether they would fund a, the writing of a CR, and historic people, we wanted to talk to Historic District Commission and the Historic Commission. And we did that rather quickly, and it then appeared that there might be just enough time to see additional committees and bring this to the Board of Selectmen tonight on the 23rd. And so that's what we've been doing. So we've seen, you're going to see in your package, you should have at least four, maybe five, letters of support from the committees that we visited, and those were Open Space, Conservation Commission, Historic District, Historic District Commission, Historic Commission, and, did I mention all? Planning stewards, yes, and land stewards, right, land stewards. So we've seen all those groups and had some very good discussions, and we issued a number of revisions to the conservation restriction. Oh, and we also met with Corey York of Department of Public Works, because there's some questions about the storage of the farm equipment in the barn at Morrison Farm and in the unattached garage at Morrison Farm. So we've had all those conversations and gone through a number of iterations of the conservation restriction, and what you have in your package is version 5, which, to the best of our knowledge, addresses everyone's concerns that have been raised thus far. However, the committees, because of the schedule, have not had all time to go back and revote this version 5. So that will probably happen at their next committee meetings. Okay, we've got their slides up, so I'll go with that. So I assume you have those on your laptops. Okay. So the request is to get select board approval to go forward with our proposal to put the conservation restriction on Morrison Farm. So the land, what we've tried to do here, from the AgCom's point of view, is to protect the land. That's our primary interest. However, we realize there's other concerns with the historic buildings, so we tried to write the CR to accommodate the future use, particularly of the farmhouse, and allow that to be preserved historically, should the Historic District Commission or, and the Historic Commission wish to do so. What the CR does, it will, the land will be protected in the CR from activities that would reduce its environmental or agricultural value, thus assuring existing and future conservation, agriculture, and recreation, including forests, hiking trails, community gardens, open pasture, meadow, orchard, and dog walking. What it would not allow are activities such as hunting, operation of motorcycles, ATVs, powered trail bikes, snowmobiles, dumping, introduction of invasive species, evacuation of soil, disturbing the topography, or any activities detrimental to drainage, flood control, water quality, or erosion control regarding the buildings. The Morrison Farm historic buildings, including a farmhouse, single-car garage, chicken coop, and barn that dates to 1933, are constrained to present use, I'm going to say something more about that in a second, constrained to present use, and if any repairs or renovations are required, the footprint would have to be maintained, and the outward historic appearance would have to be maintained. In the case of the farmhouse only, it was the strong request of the Historic Commission that that building be allowed to have flexibility in terms of future use. And I'll say a little bit more about that in a moment. Can we go to the next slide? Okay, this slide is really designed to quickly go through a lot of issues that always come up when this issue is discussed, and I'm hoping to sort of say, yes, we've taken these into account in our planning and not get into some of the rat holes that we've gotten into in the past. That was the intention of this slide. So in 1997, the town bought the land. And, oh, I'm sorry, just a little far away to read. Well, I can read it from my own slide. That's probably what I can do. Okay. So in 1997, the town bought the land. In 2007, there was a reuse committee that made a number of recommendations, and one that's turned out to be wonderful, not only the hiking trails and the boardwalks, but the community gardens have been a real success story. And there's a number of letters in your package, I think there's about six of the community gardeners that wrote letters, and they're really heartfelt, they're very, very sincere. And there are 50 community gardeners over there, the, I talked to Kim Clark, it's fully, it was fully reserved, they had seven, that they were on the waiting list for this coming year, and then they were able to take some of those to other community gardens in the town, but there's still two that only will go to Morrison Farm. So it's definitely getting a lot of use in that way. And there's a lot of dog walkers, and the hiking trails are used and boardwalk is used. So it's definitely being very well used. In 2013, at town meeting, there was a plan to build a community center and a number of things, authorization was denied at town meeting. 2016, there was a proposal to sell a piece of the property to Habitat for Humanities. The Board of Selectmen voted unanimously against selling the house, and I think one of the big issues was dividing the land in frontage. The CR, it's written in version 5, cannot be divided. The land cannot be divided. So that issue has been addressed. And here we are today, and proposing the CR for the Morrison Farm. Next slide. So this is something that's being discussed right now, and it is really within the domain of the Historic Commission's, not the Ag Commission, but I'm bringing it up because it does have something to do with funding, and I know that in the past, the issue of maintaining historic buildings at the cost of the town is not, is not something that is, it's not a good thing. It's a cost to the town. So we're trying to account for that, and one of the proposals, I'm going to mention two ways that the funding can come into this. One of them is what you're seeing on your slide, which is a national register entry for together a number of properties along about a three-quarter mile stretch of Concord Road that would extend from the East Acton Pocket Village all the way down to the chapel, the Woodlawn Chapel. And the Morrison Farm is approximately in the middle of that. There's also the Alarm Rock, which I think you're probably familiar with, along that path as well. Now, so the CR is written, I mean, it doesn't prohibit this, because the Morrison Farm is, that flexibility's been built in, the house for itself, and the important point here is that getting national register status is an important stepping stone to getting funding and grants and so forth for historic preservation. The other thing that we would do is set up a 501(c)(3) to raise funds to support activities on Morrison Farm, and we would do that after this is approved by the state. So it would have to go through the, through the town meeting, and then it would have to go to the state and be approved. And CR is approved at that point, we would set up a 501(c)(3). Maureen Bodnar of AgCom has volunteered to fund the initial starting of that, and then we'd have a meeting, and the purpose of the, of the 501(c)(3) would be set, and it would then be established. And that purpose could include things like support of the boardwalks and so forth, it could also support the renovation and maintenance of buildings, it could also be used for a number of things on the property. So that would be a proposal as well. So there's two possibilities, and there are other possibilities as well, but I just wanted to say that we've had these discussions, there are ideas on how to preserve this property going forward, contractively, at minimum cost to the town. We can go to the last slide? So this is just quickly a way of summarizing what's happened, and it helps me not to leave anything out in the conversation. So I think I've already talked a little bit about the initial first steps, and so we started actually with the Acton Conservation Trust pledging the support for the CR, and that was on the 27th of December. My legend there, the little status box bar on the right of each item, is green for positive, very positive is dark green, positive in discussion is very light green, in between is positive, and then uncertain and negative. And we don't have any uncertainty or negativity here. We have very strong agreement across all these committees. So we've got six committees, including AgCom, Department of Public Works, and an outside nonprofit, which is Acton Conservation Trust. So all those groups, eight groups, are in agreement. And of course, the community gardeners are in agreement. But just to take you quickly through the- in agreement. But just to take you quickly through this, we began drafting, oh, I talked to Corey York, and we had an onsite meeting there to look at the equipment, got agreement from Corey that he wanted, definitely wanted to keep storing equipment in the garage, in the barn. The barn is pretty well filled up with equipment, primarily, I think, from the cemetery crew, and then the unattached garage is filled with equipment from trees and grounds. So it's getting used, and he wants to continue to use it, and all these buildings would, by the way, I don't think I mentioned this, but all these buildings would remain closed to the public. So they're not public access buildings. They would be, they're padlocked now, and that's the way they would be. With the exception of the farmhouse, it could ultimately, which is locked today, but could ultimately be, and would initially be mothballed, meaning it's a tight, watertight shell, and it's not, the interior is not necessarily maintained, but the exterior would be maintained. And then that, as I said, would be open to future use if funding and so forth is available. So then we went through all the committees, OSC, the draft is, was initially released, and then we've been through a number of revisions, and as I've said, we've had positive results. So here we are today at the select board meeting and requesting to go forward. Any questions on what we've said so far?
So, no, I think the entire select board probably have some questions and comments to make. If you have any other, you know, wrap-up comments, you can make them now, and then we'll kind of open this up.
Wrapping it up, I would say this has been a great experience for the AGCOM to get out and meet all the committees. If I were to do this again, I would try to do it in a slightly different format so that we weren't, it's difficult to do this, I think, because of the restrictions of open meeting law and sending documents around. It's also the committees meet once a month, and they don't all meet together, and it takes a lot of time and a lot of effort, hundreds and hundreds of conversations and discussions and so forth. And it's a little tricky to keep it all straight. So I would do it a little differently if I had to do this again. It was a good experience for us. We got out and met the committees and learned a lot of things and so forth. Other than that, I hope we can take this forward. I mean, there's strong agreement about, there's no disagreement with any of these committees about conserving the land. The trickier things are the buildings and cost of the town and those kinds of things, and we hope we can go forward in such a way that it's acceptable to everyone.
Okay, thank you. I'll start off with a couple of questions.
Sure.
In some of the initial discussion when the land was purchased, there was a great deal of discussion about potential use of fields for recreation, active recreation. Have you engaged the Recreation Commission with any discussions on this?
So then we have not talked to Recreation Department. We have not talked to Finance Committee, and the reason is, is we just really ran out of bandwidth in the time that we had. But yes, we should talk to Recreation. I mean, the recreation that exists there now is compatible with the farmland and the environment and so forth, I think, and we have hiking and so forth, recreation. I don't, I think it's been considered in the past to put playing fields and things like soccer fields in the fields and so forth. The land is really, there's quite a bit of wetland, wet marsh out in that area that would definitely not be suitable for playing fields. And there is a large open field, but I don't know if Bettina could add anything from her conservation experience about that, but I think the general feeling is that open space is great for pollinators and birds, and a lot of birds like to nest in there and eat the grasses and those kinds of things. So I don't see a strong alignment there. But we're definitely going to have the conversation with the Recreation Committee. I just haven't been able to get anything done.
Thank you. I think, you know, the observation I'd make, at least initially, is the, if we could have quiet in the audience, please, thank you. I think the big sticking point that I see, obviously, is, you know, the existing house, and, you know, people wrestle that for quite some time. There's been various sums of money spent by the town and by others to try to upgrade that, preserve it, and I, you know, my hesitation on a lot of this is that the, until we've got some real firm ideas about what's going to happen with the, certainly the house, then this CR might really impede any possible reuse of the house. I hate to see it just left as an artifact, but I'll certainly open it up for questions from other members of the board. David?
Well, thank you for tackling this. I mean, a lot of people have tried to tackle the Morrison Farm, and not been successful. So I'm definitely in favor of a CR preserving the land. However, I completely agree with Dean. I am not in favor at all of covering the buildings with the CR. There are lots of problems with that. I mean, either you're forcing the town to maintain empty buildings, which are not used for anything, at great cost on an ongoing basis, you know, indefinitely, or let them implode, right? So unless we maintain the house, and, you know, in 50 years, it'll collapse in on itself and just be an eyesore, and then everyone will be upset, you know, it has to be, you know, maybe we, if the CR was in place, maybe we can't even cart it away and fix the eyesore, right? It just has to be allowed to collapse. So I think that the buildings need to be made into a separate parcel from the rest of the farm, but, you know, that's just one person's opinion. I will say that there, I think there is no hurry here, right? It does not have to be this year's town meeting. I think we should aim for next year's town meeting. You know, the only thing the CR does is it allows a town meeting, whenever it gets passed, to check a future town meeting, right? In other words, the town meeting next year, for example, could prevent a future town meeting from reusing that land. But if town meeting is not inclined to do that now, there's no, you know, we're just protecting town meeting from itself, right? You know, nothing can happen to that land unless town meeting approves to dispose of it, and there's no such proposal on the table, right? So nothing is going to happen to that land in the next year. I think we should take that year and figure out how to separate the buildings out and figure out, you know, even if we can't decide today what to do with the buildings, I think if we separate them out, preserve the rest with the CR, and then do something, I mean, I'm, it's just completely unacceptable to me to lock this building in so that it gets collapsed, you know, collapses in on itself in 50 years, or we're, the town is responsible spending many, many thousands of dollars every year maintaining this building for no purpose. I would not mind maintaining the building for a purpose, right? But there has to be something here that allows the town to do something with this building in the future. You know, in other words, should we transfer it to a nonprofit? At one point, there was a proposal to put a museum there. If that came up again, and we wanted to transfer it to a nonprofit for a museum, we should be able to do that, right? Or whatever proposal might happen in the future, right? But I think it needs to be a separate issue than the land, myself. Thank you.
Could I just get a clarification on that? So there are two types of buildings here. There's the farmhouse, and then there's the barn and the unattached garage. And the unattached garage are in town use, so I would suggest that maintaining the barn and the unattached garage is in the town interests because you're using it to store equipment. The house is a different matter. I did want to say one thing, didn't mention this. Again, this is really Historic Commission affairs, but I did check with the people over at Minuteman National Park about preserving buildings, and got some very knowledgeable people, and their claim is that the roof is sound, the windows are sound, and you run a dehumidifier inside the house, it will last as well as a house that's being used. So it doesn't, it will last a long, long time. To run a dehumidifier means that somebody probably needs to maintain it monthly, replace cartridges or filters and so forth, and it will need electricity. But electricity, I think, is still active on the farm anyway because it runs a well pump for the community gardens. So just wanted to add that. There are two separate things here. I think the barn and the house are in the town's best interest to maintain because of the fact they are in use for storing equipment. The farmhouse, yes, I understand the point, and it would be my understanding that we would raise funds to eventually not place that burden on the town for maintenance.
So my problem here is that we're talking in perpetuity, right? So we store equipment there now. We don't know if we want to store equipment there, and you don't know, I don't know, nobody knows. You know, we're in the process of figuring out a new DPW facility. After that facility is built, do we still want to keep equipment there? I don't know the answer to that. And so, and if we found a better use for the house, would we rather use those buildings to support the house's use? I don't know the answer to that. I am unwilling to advocate for town meeting that we not allow the buildings to be changed without, we don't have any idea what we want to do with them. The, I agree that we could preserve the house, but just, you know, but it costs money to do that. I mean, all you need to do is look at the funds we're investing in the Asa Parlin House out behind this building, right? It is, and again, I am not willing, this is just me, right, but I'm not willing to say we cannot change that house and allow it to just deteriorate. You know, we have to paint it, we have to, you know, re-roof it, and it's, to me, terrible to do that and not have a use for the house, right? I want to, you know, maybe we don't know a use today, but I am really unwilling to put this in a CR and say we can never find a use for this house, right? That's, for me, I mean, I would advocate against this as it currently stands to town meeting.
I understand that. There is one other point of clarification, though. When you talk about separating the house and the barn and these, primarily these four historic buildings, are you saying separate the land? Because I think that was brought up before, and it was voted down, it was, I think it was, I believe, if we look back at the chronology, I believe it was the Board of Selectmen who was definitely against selling off a piece of that land, because it is an important piece of the frontage and the act, it is the present access to the rest of the land and the parking and the community gardens and so forth. So that's sticky. So are you, I think, I think maybe what you're saying is it's a matter of raising the buildings, and then the question is, is where do you put the town equipment? And in maintaining the frontage. I think, I think that's, if I'm understanding what you're saying.
May I respond again? No, I am not advocating tearing down the buildings. I would like to find a real use for them. What the Board of Selectmen voted against in 2016 was to transfer it to Habitat for Humanity, okay? This has been a constant issue for these buildings, is agreeing in a consensus basis what we want to do with them. So that, we didn't want to give them to Habitat, fine, at least at that time we didn't, but that doesn't mean we don't want to do anything with them ever, right? To me, the anything ever has to be taken out of the equation. Otherwise, I can't support this.
Okay. Other comments from the board? Fran?
Quick comments, and I don't know if benefit anything, but I did see the presentation through the HDC and the HC. I've becoming more familiar with it the more I hear about the project, and I would be in favor of bringing this to town meeting this time around. I need to learn a little more about CRs. I know that the barn and the exterior garage is being used by the town. There's been some talk in HC, really maybe using the house for future use, not restricting the use in any way. I think that was their big sticking point, too. They wanted to be able to, in the future, see maybe it being leased, or maybe a small museum, or, but I think this parcel with the attached gardens is really important, and I think that keeping this as open space is a good, good direction the town should take.
Thank you. Comments from other members? Himaja?
Sorry, catching up on notes. One question I did have was, has this, thank you for the draft warrant articles. I'm wondering if this has been reviewed by town council and needs to be, and I think if, to Fran and David's point, if we could have town council review this and provide suggestions for how we could potentially separate the conservation restrictions so that we have a little bit more leeway with the house, but I don't know if anyone has insights on that.
So with regard to town council reviewing it, CRs, you know, there's a standard format for them, so generally, there's a template, but even with that, they're very complicated and involved, and several iterations and several review periods. I didn't think it was appropriate for council to review that document until we get direction from the board. That's what we want to do. There are other CRs that we're actively trying to finalize, so I didn't want to bring this one forward until I got any further direction.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense, and I think that, yeah, for me, ideally, if town council can review it, and to David's point, maybe this doesn't have to be this town meeting because it is a short period of time, but maybe if we could extend the time period that we have, maybe consider next town meeting and then get this reviewed by town council. Because I do agree, I think that if we are going to do this, doing it right and making sure that we're doing this to maximize the benefit for both the buildings that we have and also the land that we want to protect, open space-wise, I think that would be important. So that's where I'm leaning.
Thank you. Jim?
Patrick, I just wanted to thank you and the AG Commission for wrestling with this issue that has, you know, sent more than one committee, you know, to the shoals, and, you know, it's a tricky one. I think that the, you know, the direction to check in with Recreation is important because that was part of the complexity before and the sort of the locking of the situation, and, you know, my informal sense is that we've moved beyond that, but you got to check that out. The other thing is that, you know, I think there is a big difference between the need for CRs on privately owned land and the need for CRs on town-owned land. The, at least from a select board point of view, hey, you know, we already control this land. We can already do what we want with it or not to. So where there's no concern that some private owner is going to, you know, suddenly put up a drive-in movie theater, as much as I wouldn't, I would like to have a drive-in movie theater somewhere within easy distance, you know, it would be a bad idea to put it in Morrison Farm, but we can just stop that by just saying, no, we're not going to do that. So I agree, there's no rush here because we do have, you know, it's town-owned land, it's the board. It seems like the current situation is pretty good. As you've noted, the situation with the house is still, you know, unclear, and we've still got the, kind of the arguments between, you know, the historical folks and the financial folks about, you know, the importance of keeping old houses around. And, you know, if the board has to end up, you know, mediating that, that's what we're here for. The, a comment I have is that we had, there's a similar CR with the Boston Area Gleaners, and one of the features of that CR is that the map distinguishes between the forested area and the agricultural area, and the CR language itself has different uses and restrictions for the agricultural area and the forest area, and that may be appropriate here. But I think there's some places in the CR where it's sort of trying to blur over that, like, we're trying to protect the forest and the agriculture, and we'll only allow foresty-type things and agriculture-type things on this land. But it doesn't say, you know, for example, oh, let's clear the wood. But it doesn't say, you know, for example, oh, let's, let's clear the woods and have a bigger farm, or let's, let's let the meadows get smaller and grow more big trees, and beef, both of which are, you know, interesting and important things that we might want to allow. But if you, if the Ag Commission and the other commissions you're talking with have a strong sense about that, then it might be good to reflect that in an eventual CR. It could also just be a policy, it could just be an agreement of that, of what we're going to do, but I see the, I see the concern. I mean, when I was on the Land Stewardship Committee, we were eager to get a CR on the forested part of the land because right now it's owned general municipal. So, you know, the town, from the point of view of the land stewards, who didn't have a lot of influence over the town, the town could have said, oh, we're going to put, you know, a parking lot back there, and that would have been allowed. Now I'm less concerned about that because I'm temporarily in this position of authority here, but, you know, that's not going to last forever. And forests have a certain, you know, eternal value to them, at least really, really long-term value that's kind of lined up with a CR, the, the power of a CR. So I'm inclined to slowly and carefully head in this direction of having a CR. Doesn't seem like an emergency, and it seems too quick to try to get it at this town meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. You know, I, I think, I, I do think it's, it's awfully quick to try to get it ready for May 1st. I think there's some serious issues with the house and the other structures. You know, perhaps a proposal for next year is, you know, go back for, come back for CR, but not on the entire parcel, maybe specifically exclude the buildings and, you know, a certain portion of the, of the land. I know some years ago, there was discussion about putting a CR just on the forested section out and back, and then still leave some development opportunities for the fields themselves. I, from my understanding, I don't think that there's a huge demand for large recreation areas right now, but that's the issue with the CR is that it's forever. Who knows what we're going to need in 200 years? So again, I, I think I reflect the attitude on a number of members of the board, if not the majority, that there's still got to be some, some work done on this. And this is a, this is just an incredible knot you're trying to take apart with a very small marlin spike. I mean, this is something that people have been dealing with for 25 or 30 years, so I think you've made some great progress on it, but I'm not sure at this point I'd be ready to recommend bringing it to town meeting. I'll entertain any comments from the audience at this point.
Thank you for your work. I love everything I'm hearing here. And I did warn them when I first heard about this, that this was, as you put, a big knot with a small, a needle, really. The nesting birds, there are very few meadows left in Acton, so I feel like it's really important to preserve that. Use of the house, community center, habitat, sure, it could be leased, you could separate out the, the conservation restriction. I hope you don't have a drive-in. It should be a bike and walk-in, right? Thank you. Kmart! But thank you for this work. I would love to see this, oh, that was my question, that's what made me stand up. Is this a two-thirds vote, John, for CR? Yeah. So keep that in mind, two-thirds really easy to beat, okay? You get all the way there. You know, I might recommend to the applicants, I'm busy with applicants right now, that you go for a non-binding resolution, perhaps two, or two or three, to see what the temperature of town meeting is, you know, because as has been pointed out, that, that there's no proposal on the, on the horizon, at least that I've heard of, and if these guys haven't heard of it, chances are it's not happening, of anything being proposed for that land. So you might be better off waiting, and I do urge, I'd love to hear what Ann Forbes is going to say because I'm probably going to agree with it, but separating out the, the buildings so that they can be used. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ann Forbes, 25 Martin Street. I have, I have two separate things to point out, but first, I really want to compliment the, the Ag Commission and Pat and all the work that, that has been done. This has been a huge amount of work, and I think it's tremendous progress, even though it's not finished. But I, I would like, I have my town meeting hat on, having been through these proposals in the past 25 years, as you said, first one, then another, then another, mostly involving the buildings, as you said. So one thing I'm tremendously pleased about is that in this effort, they have brought the Historical Commission into the conversation and into consideration, and that was not really done too well before. But as it, having gone through all these proposals, what I remember is enough evolution in the Board, Boards of Selectmen, which what they were called then, themselves, giving us a reaction that the town could not deal with. The first big proposal, if you recall, would the, the big building behind where the barn is, that I think was 2006 or so, that involved, that involved, I think, I believe demolishing the barn. And the other thing that was taken up at that point was how to use the house, the proposal was made to rent that out, which has been done, by the way, in this kind of situation. And the big message that was repeated by that particular Board of Selectmen is town doesn't want to be a landlord. Remember that phrase? You remember? You were, most of you were here. So go 10 years later, and there was the Habitat for Humanity proposal, which would carve out a small parcel around the house and use the house for a Habitat housing. The slogan that came out of that is that the town doesn't want to get rid of the property. So to me, that left the town meeting voters with two contradictory decisions on the, on the part of two different, two different Boards of Selectmen that were really impossible to deal with. So I, I would like you to think about that as you, as you make your thoughtful decisions. Just the other thing I wanted to point out, when, when the question of funding comes up for whatever is done with the buildings, and I am most concerned with the buildings because I think that the land is doing fine under its present management, is to consider what the logical funding sources will require. The ones that I have dealt with in terms of historic properties, specifically the Ironwork Farm properties, the Faulkner House and Jones Tavern in South Acton and in some other towns, I just wanted to point out that those largest, the larger grant programs, which of course we want to consider, I think we all want to consider those, require a couple things. The first is that they require that the property be on the National Register. And the Historical Commission has already made great progress in, in the past by getting the official eligibility opinion from Mass Historical Commission that determined that the property as it is, with the land as it is and the buildings as they are, is eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. And that's your go-ahead to do, to get your, write the National Register nomination and get the property on the National Register. When that is done, that is what opens you up for some of the bigger program, bigger funding programs, because they will require National Register status. Some of them will require only state register status, which can come with local historic district, so that's another option to keep in mind. And a part of some of those programs, one that I'm, one that I'm most familiar with is, is the Mass Preservation Projects Fund that comes through the Mass Historical Commission. They give some of the, some of the larger amounts for rehab and renovation of, preservation of buildings. They are likely to require their own preservation restriction, even if there is already one on the buildings that is held by the town or something else. And that, I believe, that is what we have in place in Jones Tavern, for instance. We got town funding for, I think it was, one was, I'm remembering, chimney restoration and roof replacement. One of those was funded through the town, the other was funded through Mass Preservation Projects Fund, and the town required preservation restriction on, on the buildings, on the building, and for the other one, Mass Historical Commission required its own. So that's something to keep in mind when you're dealing with the buildings, that whatever language is, is in the arrangement is going to have to allow for that particular possibility. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Yes, Fran?
Ann, can I just confirm with you, both Faulkner and Jones both have tenants in, in the properties, right? Yeah.
Hi, Alyssa Nichols, School Street. I just want to start out by reading to you the Acton 2020 Comprehensive Community Plan Vision Statement. Let us plan so that in the future, Acton has retained its uniqueness by preserving its rural and historic characteristics, with ample open fields and meadows, tree-lined roads with meandering sidewalks, ponds, farms, wooded areas, stone walls, and beautiful renovated historic buildings. That is the Morrison Farm property, right there. I am really disappointed to hear from so many of you that we're not in a rush and that this is not a tenable situation. The town staff and the Ag Commission has worked really hard on this. I went on a walk with Bettina Abe, I can't even remember what it was, but it was, it was some outreach to residents of that property to talk about the fact that it's not a protected property, it's a municipal property that doesn't have a CR on it. What's the rush? The rush is, this sweet lady is retiring in a couple of months, and she has the knowledge and has walked the steps to get us to this place, and, and I'd like to see it happen at this town meeting. Pat just showed you that it has full support from everybody that he, he's reached out to, all of the different committees and boards. And David, you mentioned the, the preservation of the building, you know, we couldn't do anything with it and it would just implode. That's another reason for the rush, because if we wait until next year, then there's just that much more deterioration. If we get this CR on the property, including the buildings, then we can go ahead with the, the efforts that Pat described to seal the building and keep it from deteriorating even further. The Historical Commission hosted Pat twice, and we expressed, all of the commissioners were in agreement, we expressed that we didn't want a restriction on future use of those buildings, because the original proposal was, we need to maintain forever the current appearance and the current use. And the current use is, for the house at least, the farmhouse is nothing. So we want that building to be a living building, either rent it out to tenants, there, there's a property in Concord, the Harrington Wheeler property, there's tenant farmers there, the town raised, well, not the town, but a group raised funding to do the renovations, and volunteers logged 650 hours to work on that. We, we can get creative. I'm so tired of hearing that we don't want to maintain these historical properties, and yet that's the number one goal in our community master plan, is to, you know, one of, one of the things that we find, that we feel is most important as a community, is to preserve those rural and historic features of our town. And once they're gone, they're gone forever. You know, the town can be a tenant. We've got a new town manager, we've got new select board members, and, you know, people might be, might be open to this, and we can continue to do outreach between now and town meeting to get the support that we need to get a two-thirds vote. But there are lots of possibilities, and I'm not sure I understand the lack of support for the conservation restriction, because it doesn't say that nothing could be done with those buildings. It leaves open the flexibility, it just maintains the external appearance. But, you know, maybe one day we won't need to store tractors in that barn, maybe we'll have barn dances there, maybe there will be a museum, maybe there will be a bed and breakfast there. Maybe the community gardeners, who are so attached to this land and want it preserved, can be the, you know, the mobilizing force to work on the house as well and, and, you know, brainstorm some creative solutions. It's, it's a really important property, and there's efforts now underway to get, you know, that Concord Road corridor as either a district or individual properties on, on the state register. So I hope that you support it, and I hope that you support bringing it to this town meeting.
Thank you.
I've changed my mind on timing. Let's go for it, thanks.
Okay, Matt, do we have anybody online?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there are two raised hands, or three raised hands, I'm sorry.
Okay, first one, please.
Madeline Cruz, you should be able to speak.
Hi, Madeline Cruz, 3 Sashon Way. So what it seems to me here is that the CR is not saying that the house can't be used in the future. What they're saying is that the external appearance can't change because it's a historic house. Therefore, with everything happening in our country and the housing crisis that exists, and not knowing the certainty of what the house may be used for, it still shouldn't stop us from preserving it and protecting it forever. I think what's happening here is we're mixing apples and oranges, and we're talking about one subject, and that subject has several different topics. There's no reason to hold this back. There's no reason to say we can't protect this property from being ruined, taken down in the external point of view, so why not take this to town meeting? There is enough time. I'm pretty sure there's a lot of people out there that would love to volunteer. I'll be one of them if I have to, but let's, let's take this to town meeting and let the people decide, because at this point, this is kind of just dragging on for this house to fall apart, and then people are just going to start fighting about other things that, you know, we could have just protected by now. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Next, Matt?
Michaela Moran. Michaela, you should be able to speak.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak. This is Michaela Moran, 80 School Street. The past three or four persons that spoke there at the meeting, I really absolutely support and agree with. There are practical considerations here. The CR does not preclude use of the building, and I think that we do need to get the CR done. But I also want to mention that the Ironwork Farm But I also want to mention that the Ironwork Farm has two historic buildings, we have two tenants in those buildings. We have maintained those buildings largely, our portion of any, any grants or whatever we get are from those rentals, even though they're very low. So I know this is done in other towns, where a building might not have a particular municipal use, but does have a use as housing. That building can then be either leased to the Acton Housing Department, ACHC, or other Acton Housing Authority, and have them be the landlord, just like they are with their other properties. Why not? But that little bit of this proposal about what to do with the building should not prevent us from taking this to town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Matt.
And last is David Hom. David, you should be able to speak.
Okay, thank you. So Pat came to two HDC meetings, even though we have no jurisdiction, obviously, over this property, because it's not in the districts, but we have, you know, extensive knowledge in our committee about these things. So we wrote a letter of support. And I agree with the three or four previous people that you should take this to town meeting. Every year, every time Morrison Farm comes up, people kick it down the road. So let's stop kicking it down the road. I think one of the things important historically about this property is, it's the only Depression era farm we have. And it's important that the, it tells a story, and the story includes all four of the pieces, the house, the barn, the garage, and the chicken coop. So it's important, whatever's done with the buildings, that they're maintained as a group, it's an ensemble that tells the story. And I think, I think all the points that have been made are reasonable. I think it's reasonable to get it in shape enough to, where a tenant can occupy it. There is, there is a program run by the state, I think it's the trustees of reservations, where they have various houses buried in, in some of these big rural properties, and they, they do rent them out in exchange for taking care of the, the property. And they have a, there's, there's an established program for that, and we should look into that as well. But I urge you to, to let it go to town meeting, because I think we got the momentum, Pat's done incredible work, and we should keep the momentum going. Thank you.
All right, final comments from board members. Jim.
There's a couple of new things in this proposal for me that I don't want us to lose track of, that I, I think are breakthroughs. One is that the idea of a, of a 501(c)(3) to do the fundraising to, you know, transform the building in some important way. Because that's one of the things that's stopped this process in the past, is the notion that, oh, gosh, it's not an accessible house, it's going to need this kind of work, it's going to need that kind of work. You know, the, the investment to make that house usable has been something that the town has shied away from. So what's new in this idea is, is, is the, the 501(c)(3). And hearing about Maureen Bodnar's enthusiasm about it, and by enthusiasm, I mean both her energy and her money, is exciting. It means there, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a real possibility this could happen. So one of the things I encourage you guys to do is to think about, what is the path that gets us to a 501(c)(3) managing that house or the area right around it that can happen now, or can start happening now, so you're not slowing down your momentum? You know, are, is it clear that the, the C R is a necessary step in that? I'm not sure it is. So I think that'd be worth looking at. The other thing that was, the other thing that was new for me, anyway, I don't think it was new for other people, was the placing this area on the National Historic Register because of the funding opportunities that that brings, and the level of protection that it provides. And that, too, I think it's worth proceeding on that at, at full, full speed ahead without, and, and consider whether the C R is the, is really a gating factor in, in moving ahead with that. If it's not, then you don't need it, or you don't need it yet. You may, for example, be able to proceed with, for example, a fall town meeting change in the zoning of that area. So at least if it's not general municipal, there's less risk about what happens to it. But that's speculation, that would, that would, you know, I'd want you guys to look at that. So I guess the message I want to give you guys is, doing great things, the C R may not be the right next step, but I think you've got great ideas that, you know, I want to find a way to support. Thanks.
David.
Thank you. I want to emphasize what I said earlier and also what Jim said, I really, and I'm not being at all facetious, but I very much appreciate the work you've done on this. I do think it needs more due diligence than we can get between now and town meeting. I, I just don't see how this fits. I mean, we, just, this board alone will want to read the C R over a matter of weeks and maybe discuss it in two or three meetings, right? And so just that doesn't fit. And never mind the work in between those reads of deciding on the details, right? That, do we want to allow this? Do we want to allow that? I, I think, as I've said, that we need to have our options open here. So for example, if we wanted to transfer the house to a nonprofit for preservation, you know, and, and then maybe they rent it out, whether it's the trustees of reservations or Ironwork Farm or someone else, I'm not saying we necessarily want to do that, but I think we should be able to do that. You know, for these things, like renting it out and stuff like that, the town could do that directly, but it doesn't have to do that directly. I don't know which is better, right? You know, sometimes, you know, the entities that are not the town have more, more freedom. So I just think we need, we need more time. I'm very, you know, I'm very supportive of a number of the goals that were said here in the last half a dozen speakers, but I'm not in, in favor of passing a C R at this town meeting.
Thank you. I think, you know, my, my feeling, I, I raised this at the AgCon meeting that I attended with you folks a few weeks ago. I don't think there's a panic situation here with protecting the land. The land is owned by the town. It's controlled by the town manager and the Board of Selectmen. Any attempt to reuse it, if we wanted to sell it, if that's what you're worried about, first, the board would have to determine that it was surplus, and then they have to have a vote with that, and then that would have to go to town meeting to sell the land off. And there's never been any discussion, that I'm aware of, that, of selling the land. If we wanted to put some other use on it that you might find offensive. You know, we raised an issue at one point, a couple of years ago, maybe it's a good location for dog park. Well, you know, we got, I personally got over 200 emails on that weekend after that idea got surfaced. So I think, you know, it's, it's tied up pretty tight. There's quite a bit of land in town that's publicly owned, which is not under C R's right now, anyway. So I don't think that there's a, I, I know you want some closure on this, but I don't think it's a panic situation. I think the biggest problem that I see is the issue with the house, and all the various possibilities of that. What I might recommend is, you know, we had a similar problem, which we hope we're solving, with the 17 Woodbury Lane out and back. And the way that got solved is that several successive select boards made it a priority on our, on our priority list of, of projects we needed to get done. And we handed this off to the town manager, and he engaged many resources, and we've kind of found an end state that we're going to be able to get to with 17 Woodbury Lane, otherwise known as the Ace of Parlin House. Right now, regardless of what happens in the election, a majority of the board is sitting right here, who will be some of the folks that will be dealing with selecting the goals for the select board for the next year, and will be doing that probably in June. So I think if we can get support from all members of the, of the select board to make that a goal, I think that's important, and that's something we can charge the town manager with. I agree with others here that, I think, you know, you're a long ways there, and goodness knows, you've made a huge amount of progress, more progress than lots of other folks have. But I just, I don't see that this is ready to go to town meeting. I don't think that you'll get a, a vote of support from the select board at this point, the way it's written. And the stumbling point really is not an AgCon problem, it's those buildings. So I don't know if other members of the, of the select board want to weigh in on that or not.
I would be, I'd be willing to go to town meeting, this town meeting with this proposal. I would even offer to be liaison. So I, I'd like to make a move to get this on our town warrant.
Okay, I hear a motion. Can I hear a second?
I'll second it just so that we can have a formal vote.
Thank you. Okay. Moved and seconded. Any additional discussion? Him and you.
I think for me, I'm torn, because I also, I, I really do respect the work that's been put in, and it's really exciting work. I think that we all want to see this incredible parcel of land and these incredible buildings preserved. But I do think that, I do think that having more guidance and a, a more drawn-out process for town council to review this would be really helpful, just to make sure that if we are going into this, we understand the full implications and, kind of like was mentioned to, having multiple select board meetings where we can discuss this and tease out the language might be helpful. So I think for me, I would prefer that we extend this a little bit further, but that's, that's my personal preference.
Thank you. I think we're ready for a vote. All in favor of the motion proposed by Fran, please say aye.
Aye, I'm saying aye.
All opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Abstentions? Okay, thank you. And I hope, you know, there's been lots of talk from the historic interests about wanting to do something with this house, and I certainly hope that, that people will continue with that. I think that's the solution to the problem. Thank you. As noted earlier, the discussion about the economic development and resolution is being held over until our February 6th meeting. Item 6, discuss requests for additional street lighting in West Acton. Mr. Manager.
Thank you. The discussion of additional lighting was brought forward at the recent meeting of the board, and we were asked to go back and find additional information. We did our best to accumulate more details about the type of lighting being proposed, and also get some information from some others that have businesses in that area or otherwise are interested in, in that area and the need for lighting. I believe most of that information was uploaded to your packet or provided to you otherwise. At this point, I think the recommendation stands to find a way to improve safety through lighting, with the understanding that, at least from my perspective, that a future look at other ways to incorporate lighting into the overall streetscape would be a, a good long-term plan. But in the short term, that additional lighting is needed in a few areas to make it safer for pedestrians and, and others that use the streets and sidewalks.
Okay, thank you. Comments from select board members? Jim.
The issue, the, the letter from the, you know, the West Acton Village Merchants staying with me right now, which noted that the issue with lighting extends through most of that commercial district. It's not just strictly a problem for in front of the, you know, the West Acton Village Works. It is where we got the original request from. But I, I wonder if we want to be, if, if we have a relatively low-cost solution that's low-cost enough that it could be temporary, and we wouldn't feel like that was a really bad thing, then it might be worth looking at extending that, you know, somewhat easy, somewhat temporary solution farther down, farther towards Central Street. And the other thing I was wondering about, because I, I'm afraid I don't remember if I saw this in the packet or not, is whether there was a way of having a reasonably inexpensive way of having a timer on these lights, so that they would, as the hours get later, I think that the balance between the, the business users and the residents there shifts. You know, it's, to me, the later it gets, the, the more the lighting issue is more about not, you know, creating extra light that's going to interfere with, with people's sleep.
David.
Hi, I, I, I think that these kind of lights mounted on poles are, are not expensive, right? And if we came up with a, you know, a better streetscape lighting plan for the area, we could take these down and replace it with, with, with that. As I walk from Central Street, you know, east on, on 2A, it gets darker in this area, right? And then to me, I mean, maybe, I, I have not gone and looked at each pole and see which poles have lights and which poles don't. But to me, it gets darker, even as I come from Spoo Street East, it gets darker as I walk on either side of the street, you know, so that I'm in, in, in front of Village Works. And I know for me, when I drive there at night, I, sometimes, I, I mean, I'm a little paranoid, actually, about someone not seeing me get out of the car. So I, first of all, try to, you know, make sure I don't get out while, while anybody's even close to being there. And then there have been multiple occasions where I've forgotten a mask or something else in my car, and I need to go back into my car, and so I, you know, it's actually a little dodgy getting there at night and making sure someone, someone sees you. And actually, I feel a little bit safer when someone presses the flashing beacon to cross, then I have a few moments to go out and get my thing. So I'll say a couple, a couple other things. These lights are downward focused, they, they don't shine very far out. I think we have recent issues with pedestrian safety, and I think we need to take those very seriously. You know, that's one of the issues even I brought up on, on Great Road, the crosswalks are not well-lit. And, and this is where our crosswalk is, and I think we should put these, these lights in, and if we have a, a streetscape project for West Acton in the future, we should revisit this. But I think now the safety is paramount.
John.
I'm sorry to do this, but I would request that the board continue this to the next meeting, with whatever discussion you want to have tonight, but there's more information that I wanted to... But there's more information that I wanted to present that I don't believe you have, based on what I just looked at.
Okay, thank you. Himajer.
Yeah, I'm fine continuing this to the next meeting. I lean on the side of having this light in place and improving safety, especially on that road. Kind of like David said, there have been, we've seen that pedestrian safety is paramount, and it's really heartbreaking when these types of accidents happen. And in terms of light affecting residents, I think that, to our points earlier, there are downward-facing lights, there are ways to minimize light spill. And also, I live on Main Street, so we constantly have the light in our face, and so we've purchased blinds for our house. There are ways, it's not ideal. I think either decision we take is going to have some inconveniences for some people, but I think that at the end of the day, for me, it's a matter of safety, and that's a non-negotiable thing for me. So I would lean on the side of having these lights in. But yeah, I'm happy to wait until next meeting when we have more info.
Thank you. Yeah, a couple of points I'd like to make. The present policy we're dealing with, something was put in effect probably 35 years ago. And it specifically is dealing with the fact that, under the agreements that we had at that point, streetlights were installed by Boston Edison, you had to sign a long-term agreement, they're basically permanent. We had no control over the maintenance or the cost of those lights from Boston Edison, and it became a real budget buster, frankly. The landscape has changed. We have lights which are much more reliable now with the LEDs, as opposed to the incandescence and mercury vapors. We have lights which have essentially full-cut-off fixtures, they're more easily controllable. The consumption of electricity, which is within our control now, is much more reasonable. So I think, you know, a lot of those issues have been resolved. Some of the other points, when we talk about safety, let's face it, like it or not, the town has been developed over the past 35 years, and as areas become more developed, either with commercial or residential properties, we need to provide safety for all of the users. And even the users who don't live in town, who drive through, we need to provide that safety. The fact that the police chief, the fire chief, and the public works director all feel that this is a situation where safety requires it, that sways me very strongly. As far as the discussion about other possibilities for other kinds of streetscape lighting, I think it would be great, too. I believe, correct me, Mr. Manager, if I'm wrong, but I believe the upcharge that the town ended up having to absorb for the really nice streetscape lighting at Kelly's Corner was $10,000 per unit. And that was after the state had installed all of the underground conduit and all the other backup facilities. So I think it'd be a great project to do that in West Acton Village and probably South Acton Village. But it's a hugely expensive project that's going to have to obviously get either some kind of a grant or go-to-town meeting. So I think for a short term, and I, when I say short term, I'm talking years, not months, but I think for a short-term fix to provide safety for all of the dark hours, because you never know when somebody's going to want to walk across the street, I would still be in favor of putting these lights in. That said, I'm happy to kick this off until the next meeting to see what more information the town manager can come up with. John?
Sorry, just to clarify, the initial request, as it was presented a few weeks ago, is what I would ask you to consider whenever you're ready. I think what I was looking to bring more information to you about at a next meeting was additional lighting needs that were identified in the West Acton corridor.
Let's do it all at once, because I think, you know, from the experience I've had with this, which is not extensive, but some, it makes a lot of sense to have a field of light that you can look down, as opposed to light spots, dark spots, light spots. So I think a more comprehensive solution is probably a better way, and I would look forward to seeing that other information. John? David?
Perhaps, Mr. Manager, you can also bring back, if it's possible, to do what Jim suggested and to change the timing of the lights. I believe that you can get photocell lights that stay on, for example, seven hours after sunset, or a programmable amount of time after sunset. So, and they don't require any additional maintenance or anything, it's just a change in the photocell that's installed in them. So I don't know whether they're practical from our vendor, you know, for us to obtain, but perhaps you can find out more information on that before our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Tara, go ahead.
Okay. Question for John, is, would this be in keeping with the lighting bylaw? With the shades that have lighting going down, or is it exempt from the lighting bylaw?
I don't know whether it's exempt or not, but our intent would be to identify street lighting that's down-facing and not, not like the old-fashioned ones that have a big bulb that goes everywhere.
Thank you. And I support the timers. And thank you for making mention about growth. When you have growth, you've got to keep people safe, but also safe from evictions. And that brings me back to, you know, when you have growth, you've got to protect people. I want to remind us that, well, also, I'm glad that you're not replacing everything. When these lights blow out, if the neighbors don't want them, put it back in, please don't. I don't want to forget about the developers' claims, the mall. Those guys, they brought consultants in to show us why it was going to be safer to have the mall there with cars parked on either side, and there was a question of whether they were going to dig up and put new lampposts, the beautiful historic ones, and they said, no, we don't need to, because this was sufficient, and everything was pointing to they knew what they were doing, and let us just do it. And now here we are, so many years later, and it's not safe, or people are claiming it's not safe. I'd also like to point out, I believe that the only letter that came in from, despite all the tenants, just one, the landlord wrote in, is that right? The owner of the property? But the stores didn't write in, is that correct?
I believe there were one or two other endorsement letters.
Okay. Because I am in support of small business. I'm just nervous that people are using safety as a way to just get more lighting for their businesses. So I'd like to understand why this, what is the safety claim, and how do you prove that? I take issue with the fact that it seemed that the proposal that was being forth before wasn't run by the Historic District Commission, so maybe it's because they were going to be on the telephone poles or not, but I feel like if you're talking about any infrastructure that the HDC should be included. Basically, how to keep the light from the neighbors. You know, these folks have suffered, being across from the mall. They have suffered noise, constant noise, doors slamming, all this stuff, and then the light, and now more light? Please be sensitive to these neighbors. And please announce it. Does every neighbor in within 300 of Butter's circle got a notice that this was happening? I just happened to mention it in somebody passing, and they said, no, nobody notified them. I feel like that is a policy that can be very people-centric, that if you're modifying things right next to people, just let them know. It doesn't cost that much to send out a Butter's notice. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, Matt, can you hear from the person online?
Yes, David Hom.
Hi, everyone. Yeah, not to be a stickler here, but light fixtures are within, it's in the Historic District, the street is in the District, the right-of-way is in the District, it's all in the District. The responsibility of the District doesn't end at somebody's property line. So the HDC will want to see what you're proposing. And I'll also add that, you know, I've worked with lighting consultants for 40 years, and, you know, a typical response to not having enough lighting is, we need more lighting. But it's usually not, you need more, it's usually that you need, and this is what I've learned from these guys over so many years, is you need the right amount of light in the right place. And, you know, just blasting everything with more light is not solving the problem. So I think it needs to be thought out a little bit more. I don't understand the issue yet, because I haven't had a chance to look at anything in a packet or whatever you have, but I'd love to see it and end up with just a mess of lights in the wrong place, too much here, too little there. And it's not, it's not so easy. And it is measurable, you know, there are people who can tell you how much light you have, where it is now, what you need to do to supplement it. So that knowledge is out there. So I would urge you to continue to listen the next time, and please send the stuff to the HDC and let us have a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, do we have anyone else online?
Yes, Mr. Chair, two more have.
Okay.
Hello?
Hello, go ahead.
Hi. I spoke at the last meeting when we talked about this, and one of my questions is, I just got an email back. I sent an email asking, someone at the last meeting, it said that they would plan to notify all the businesses. And I sent an email asking, were the residents notified, and why weren't they? Because if the businesses were notified, surely the neighbors would be as well. And I was told, no, there was no, no knowledge that any businesses had been notified. And tonight, it was revealed that, yes, the businesses had been notified. So I'm just a little, first, I'm just a little concerned that there's an imbalance of input on this issue, because it does seem to be geared towards asking the businesses what they want. And as residents who live here 24 hours a day, I do think that our concerns should be taken into consideration. I'm also pleased to hear that the Historic Commission will be looking at this. It seems to me the right solution. And I do feel like we are reasonable neighbors, and we would just love to talk about alternatives and ways to make this manageable, and it would be very helpful if you spoke with us rather than told us what was best for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Fran?
Is there someone else on the line?
Yeah, Matt, can you let the second one in?
Yes, Mr. Chair, my apologies. Tricia.
Hello. Can you hear me? Hello. Yeah, I'm Tricia, I'm one of the owners of the Beesknees British Imports. We're up near the Central Street end of the town, and we did hear about the proposed lighting down at the Village Works end. We have a lot of customers that come in that like to walk the West Acton shops. Parking's difficult, when you find a space, you want to walk both ends of it. And a lot of people said they don't do that when it's dark, they don't do it in the winter, it's not inviting, there is no sort of, you know, cohesion between the two ends of the West Acton, you know, village. So I think my, you know, this lighting obviously should be temporary, and I think it should be, a bigger plan should be in place to make things more, you know, less patchy, as has been said. I mean, unfortunately, you can't stop the fact that there's a great big gas station in the middle lighting up the whole place, but, you know, up our end, a lot of the lighting is provided by the individual stores, so it's not really, it's very here and there. There are some streetlights at our end, they're very old, they're miles high in the sky, and they don't do a brilliant job of lighting just the footpaths and things. So yes, that's something we would be more interested in, and I think it's worth doing. West Acton is really the only walkable sort of, you know, shopping and village in the town, and a lot of people come to the town to visit us, and they like us to point out where to go and walk, and in the winter, that's just not happening, when it's getting dark, and you can say in the evenings, but it's not, it's late afternoon, you know, it's business time, when it's still, it's dark and not very inviting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fran?
Just one comment about process, and I think maybe this is a question for John, but if, if, if an application was brought to the HDC for this additional lighting, that's how a Butter's would be notified? Would the town send a Butter's notices on their own? I'm just asking for process.
The, the permission from the HDC was not something that I understood to be in play here, but if it is, we certainly would do that. And if we were an applicant before them, then we would follow whatever process is required, which I believe is a Butter's, and yes, we would be the ones doing that.
I, I think that this is an interesting issue, but I'm not, I would like to get a decision from HDC or Town Council as to whether street lighting of the scale that we're talking about, not sandmawn poles, but just attachments to existing utility poles, is even within the purview of the Historic District Commission. I remember in the past, this has been raised, that members of the HDC have objected to things like directory signs placed by the Department of Public Works, stop signs. Gee, you've got to go to the HDC to get that approval, and I'm not sure that the HDC has that authority. If we have to get HDC approval to put in a new streetlight on our existing wooden pole, does that mean that Eversource has to go to the HDC for approval to change out the transformer on the pole? Does that mean that if we're changing out, if utility companies changing out electric wires on those existing poles, does that require HDC approval? I'm not sure it does. So I think, you know, before we go down that road about HDC approval for everything that's going to happen there on existing infrastructure, I think we need to get a clear ruling as to whether that's within the jurisdiction of the HDC.
In that, just notifying residents in the area of what was going on, not so much?
I, I would only speak about what has happened historically, which is that there has never been a situation that I'm aware of where generally notified everyone in the neighborhood and asked for opinions on things like streetlights. Usually, you know, frequently, it would be, the police chief, fire chief would come up with a proposal, and that would be the end of it. Certainly, input from the neighbors is important, but when you think of the thousands of people that use these roads, who obviously would not be notified, I think you have to balance those two interests. And again, seconding what Himajer said, safety sort of trumps everything, in my opinion. We'd like to finish this discussion. Tara, so?
I was just going to point out that I don't think anybody was suggesting that you would apply to the HDC. I thought it was just to rely on their expertise in lighting. And relative to the historic precedents, I agree with you that normally you wouldn't do that, but this is where they're, these people have been barraged. So maybe this is an exception where it's so close, the commercial is so close. And then the idea of the whole stretch, doing the whole stretch at once would be great. Thank you. Because otherwise, the other side of, the west side of West Acton feels like the poor cousin. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Discuss this at our next meeting. So we come to the time where we need to discuss possible assignments. And I've taken a first pass of the assignments. I think we've got a sheet there, I think we've got, there was one change was made in the sheet after I did my assignments. This is what I'm going to recommend or suggest. I think there's a, certainly there's room for discussion. I've tried to share the wealth out. Article one, choose town officers, that would be Dean. Article two, hear and accept reports, that would be Dean. Budget transfer, that would be Dean. Town operating budget, traditionally, that's done by the chair, I'll be doing that. And the two-town capital, the capital and the borrowing. Conservation restriction placeholder, if it goes forward, I would take that as liaison to the AgCom, but I'd be happy to give that up to somebody else.
Which conservation restriction was this? Was this the Main Street?
No, yes, sorry, yes.
That's Main Street?
It's ambiguous intentionally, but yes.
Okay. So if it is Main Street, presumably that would be something CPC would be involved in as well. So fossil fuel building code, Jim. Gas pilot program, Jim. 13-school-street-disposition, David. EDC resolution, Fran. Distribution center zoning, I was going to kick that to Fran just because it has an economic development side to it. Firearms dealers, David, only because you suggested it, so. Voting age, Himaja. Energy code, Jim. Groundwater protection, Himaja. Accessory apartments, Fran. LED colors, Fran. Chapter K would be Fran. Membership count placeholder, Fran. Revolving funds, Fran. Yeah. But the nice thing is a little asterisk beside each one of these. You have to be awake for them anyway, might not have to speak. 28-mapple land gift, Dean. Commuter lot, David. Septu disposal, Himaja. Transfer station, that would be Dean. Sewer enterprise, David. Ambulance enterprise, Fran. Transportation enterprise, Jim. Revolving fund budgets, David. Authorized easements, David. Chapter 90, Dean. Insurance proceeds, Fran. Federal and state reimbursements, Fran. Promiss bonds, David. Sale of foreclosed properties, Fran. That's what I've got. If anybody would like to make changes, we tried to share it out or try to make a proper assignment for what our fields of expertise are. Himaja?
I think it looks good on my end.
Okay. David?
Also looks fine. I was wondering if it would be okay for me to work with the planning department on Article 18 and maybe Himaja to work with the Town Council on Article 19 to bring language back to the board ahead of the, ahead of town meeting so we can discuss it and, you know, agree what we agree on.
Yeah, I think that'd be fine. I mean, for the purpose of this, it's whose name gets put on the list.
Okay, so I just wanted to confirm that, you know, we can work offline and bring language back.
Within the restrictions of the open meeting law, absolutely.
Yeah, we'll schedule something with you for a future meeting. Okay?
Great. Any other points? Okay, don't hate me, guys. Yeah. Consent agenda. Item eight, approve meeting minutes, December 19th, 30th, 2022.
I'll hold that.
Okay. And January 9th, 2023. Item nine, approve executive session minutes, January 9th, 2023. Item 10, appoint Zoe Mills to the 250 Committee as the Memorial Library Representative with a term to end on June 30th, 2026. Item 11, appoint Joanne Norton as acting town accountant effective February 1, 2023. Item 12, approve updated mission for the council on aging board. Item 13, accept donations for the community services programs. Orion Industry for $1,000 to the Fuel Assistance Gift Fund. Cassandra Lee Munger for $1,000 to the Serve Gift Fund. West Acton Merchants for $800 to the Serve Gift Account. And George and Abay for $250 for the Serve Gift Account. So I will entertain a motion to accept consent items nine through 13 inclusive.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, those are approved. Himaja, to your point.
Yes, thank you. Jim wanted to make a quick change to the December 19 minutes, I believe. And I think that upon review, I think they're appropriate to make those changes. Jim, do you want to read it or I can read it?
Sure. This was about when we were talking about James Fuccioni and the description seemed to imply I was saying things I don't think I said. So the rewrite is, Mr. Snyder Grant addressed concerns about skipping over an associate member by noting that Michaela Moran, previously an associate member, had already been promoted to a full member and that the planning board needed a full complement of full members before taking on new associate members. Mr. Snyder Grant addressed concerns about Mr. Fuccioni's previous involvement with the Smart Growth Alliance by noting that he sees the SGA as a building reform group rather than as a building promotion group.
Okay. Anybody willing to accept that as an edit?
Yeah, I'm happy to move that we approve consent item eight contingent on Jim's friendly amendment.
Seconded. Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor of the amended minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, thank you. Looking for?
Move to it, Sharon.
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, thank you.